Just walk away and your kids don't appear on screen. For them, maybe scarred to life.
Sam, you are ready to start on TV whenever you are ready to start the meeting.
Okay, it's six o'clock right now, so I'll go ahead and start and get up the script. We have everyone, see, Mirabai will not be here tonight. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I count seven of us. Am I missing Sam, Adam, Aaron, Mark is four, Mary's five, Bob is six, Rachel's seven, Junie's eight. Okay, there we go. So, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 5th, 2020 Boulder City Council Meeting. Anyone who is going to be at open comment or public hearing participation tonight, if you could watch and listen to the meeting through the virtual meeting stream provided to you in your confirmation email, instead of Channel 8 or YouTube, you will not have a delay like you will if you watch Channel 8 or YouTube. Lynette, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Brockett.
Present.
Bren.
Here.
Joseph.
Present.
Nagel.
Swetlik.
Here.
Wallack.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Yeah.
Young.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Lynette. Okay, so I would ask for a motion to approve the amended agenda to add item 8A, which is consideration of a motion to appoint council members to the Financial Strategy Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Does anyone object to the motion to amend the agenda? Bring none, that will pass unanimously. We are on to open comment. There's a time limit of two minutes for open comment. We have eight members of the public signed up. We will start with Eric Castro.
Yeah, I think we were gonna do the COVID first because of our guests.
Okay, that's not what the script says, so let me pull up the agenda. Hang on a moment.
Also, Sam, would you like me to project the rules for the meeting while you're pulling up the agenda?
Please do.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah Huntley. I'm the Engagement Manager for the city. Welcome to our platform tonight for the meeting. Council has adopted a few rules that we have found work best to help balance both security concerns and wanting to have an authentic and transparent meeting. So I'm just gonna quickly flash those up on the screen and review them so that everybody's on the same page about what the expectations are. Bear with me for one moment, please, while I share my screen. Okay, so as I mentioned, we're trying to strike a balance between meaningful and transparent engagement and also some online security issues that we've discovered are associated with this particular platform. So the meeting's been called tonight to conduct the business of the city of Boulder. Activities that disrupt, delay, or otherwise interfere with this meeting are prohibited. The time for speaking or asking questions may be limited, so I know we have several folks in the attendees line who signed up for open comment tonight, which we'll get to after the COVID briefing, and also for the Marpa House Public Hearing. Don't fret, we know you're there. You may not be able to tell yourself that you're successfully signed on as an attendee, but I can see your names. You should be able to hear and watch this meeting, so we invite you to stay on until it's time for us to call upon you. No person shall speak except when recognized by the person presiding, and we will have time limits tonight. Each person shall register to speak at the meeting using your real name. No video will be permitted except for city officials, employees, and invited speakers or presenters. So those of you who are waiting on the line for a public comment, while you might be able to see us, if you've used the video link, we will be hearing your voice only when it's time for you to speak. The person presiding at the meeting shall enforce these rules by muting anyone who violates any rule. We're going to use the chat box tonight only for individuals to communicate with the host, that's me. So if you have technical or online platform-related questions, I may be able to help resolve those for you without disrupting the meeting. So feel free to send me a note if there's something of that nature. If you attempt to use the chat for any reason other than seeking my assistance, like voicing your political perspective on something, we do reserve the right to disable your individual, your access to chat. Only the hosts and individuals designated by the hosts will be permitted to share their screen during this meeting. Those are all of our official rules. I do want to just also let participants know that when it is time for you to speak, it will be helpful for you to have your participants box open. So if you look at a horizontal menu at the bottom of your screen, there will be something that says participants. If you open it and go to the attendees tab, the very bottom, there's going to be a raise hand function. I do have a list tonight, but if we need to be asking people if they're wanting to, in fact, confirm that they're willing to pool, we may be using the raise hand function. So I just wanted you to be aware of where it is. And with that, I think I have nothing else to contribute, and we can go ahead with the meeting.
Great, and I just have a few comments before we go to the COVID briefing. Fellow council members, I have the participants' window up, so I can see you when you raise your hands, so I'll be trying to watch for that. Also, I have my chat window open, so if anyone needs to chat, the chat is among panelists, so I think if council members want to put a chat out, it will be seen by other council members and staff. So that's all I've got to add. Jane, would you like to take us to the COVID part of the meeting?
Thank you, Sam, and thank you, council members. So our first presenter tonight is Jeff Zinack, who is the Director of Public Health for Boulder County. Jeff?
Thanks, Jane, and thanks, Mayor and council members. Again, always a pleasure to be here with you. So what I thought I would do this week is share with you, again, the data that we're seeing on a week-to-week basis, just so you can continue to see what that looks like. And I want to cover a couple of things that happened this last week. One is, we sent out a press release today that we were sharing that we were gonna, we were gonna allow our extended stay-at-home order, which currently is in place through May 8th to expire, and that we will move to the safer-at-home guidelines from the governor starting on May 9th. And I'll talk about why we are ready to do that. In addition, we have also put in place an order for face coverings that will go into effect on May 9th and remain in effect until May 26th, and I'll talk a bit about that and why we wanted to move forward with that. As there's been a pretty significant debate that's been going on with face coverings, both in the news and locally, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well, because there's a lot up in the air, and I want to make sure that I'm sharing with you all that I know. I wanted to first thank everybody that's calling in tonight or that is listening in, and to tell them thank you, because we have got to the place that we're at today, which you'll hear me talk about, because people were willing to follow and support the orders that were in place. So I know this has been extremely difficult. I know the impacts it's had in our communities. It's been horrible, not just from the people who we've lost in this, but also from the people who have had to endure in this. And I know it's been really a no-win situation. And, but I want to thank all of you who have followed those orders, because it has helped us get to this place where we can move forward. The first thing I wanted to talk about is just talk about what, where we've come from and how we've accomplished the ability to be able to move forward. So I'm not going to recap all the things that I've talked about in the past, but I want to cover the four things that we've really worked on to try to get to the place where we could allow the order to expire. We have increased our testing numbers. We're roughly at 4,500 tests in Boulder County right now. By next week, we will be able to, over time, actually graph our total test per day. So we don't know exactly what that looks like right now. We're somewhere around 150 per day, and that number is increasing pretty significantly. We've got good support from the State Health Department, who has partnered with us to make sure we're getting more tests into our community. And we anticipate that we will be able to reach our comprehensive testing target within the next month and a half. And that is coming directly from some of the folks at the State Health Department as well. So we feel confident that we're going to continue to increase tests, and there's a lot of encouragement to do so. I also want to talk about that we've increased our prevention control FTE, so this is where I've talked about containment in the past. So the ability to have enough staff so that when we do increase testing and we identify more people that are positives, because we know that will happen, as we test more, we're going to find more positives. The governor has been stating, based on the expanded testing that he's been looking at in the state, that as many as one in two people are asymptomatic, so we know that we're going to find more people as we test, and that our case numbers will go up associated with that. But as of today, from roughly two weeks ago, we were at 17 staff, and as of today, we're at 26 staff. And our current average caseload right now, and I'll go through the caseloads and some of the data behind this when I get into the slides, but our current caseload today is roughly 21 people. We still do have increasing cases. We need about .75 FTE per case, and that includes the infrastructure that's needed behind that. So things like supervision, data analysis, administrative staffing, all those kinds of things are what are included in that .75 FTE per case. We did a lot of work with the Colorado Health Institute, the State Health Department, in our metro region to look at and project exactly what that, what that number of FTE per case needed to be. So we are pretty confident in that number. We are staffed and ready to respond based on 26 to an average caseload of 35, and again, we're at 21. So we have people that are trained, we're ready to bring them in as cases increase. So we're doing really well on that front. Our projections at a worst-case scenario at this point, and we'll go back and look at these again, are that when we have 500 tests per day, we could be around 50 per day in terms of the number of cases that we see. And in order to be able to handle that level, we would need about 37 staff. We have a process in place with an infrastructure in place that allows us to bring in more people as needed and then have them go out. We know that these cases may go up and down as we move forward over these weeks and months ahead, again, until we have a vaccine or some kind of treatment in our community. We know, we know we're going to be living in the social distancing scenario, but we have the ability to bring people in and then, and then allow people back out of the system when we don't have cases happening. So we've worked really hard to get that in place. Our total hospitalizations are stable, and they continue to be stable. And I have added a graph tonight, so you can look at specifically the COVID-19 hospitalizations that we've had in Boulder County, and you can see the actual trend associated with those specifically. And then last, our team has really worked hard during this last week to engage our business community, to help develop and review and refine our social distancing guidelines. When I was here last week, I talked about the importance of making sure that as we go into an environment where we're lifting orders and we are going to have a lot more people integrating into retail stores, as an example, that we want to make sure that we have social distancing guidelines in place that are really clear to all of our businesses, that they know what to expect, that we're not having to react at the last minute. And I am so proud to say that we've had nearly 400 businesses participate in the last week, and I want to thank specifically John Tare with Boulder City Chamber and Corinne Waldo with the Chamber as well, who really helped organize and support getting those businesses together with our staff to work through that. We are in a very good place, and I feel very confident about that. In addition, as I said earlier, we did pass a face covering order, and just as a reminder, where we are right now with our order in place is roughly around 75% effectiveness around social distancing. And when the governor moved to safer-at-home, he has been sharing that that's more like a 60 to 65% social distancing effectiveness. And we know from the modeling that we can't drop below 55% at the bottom. So again, that's why until we have an immunization or a vaccine in place or some kind of treatment, we are going to be in the social distancing space for quite, quite some time moving forward. And we hope that those things happen quickly. There's certainly a lot of investment in those things right now, but we don't know exactly when that will happen. So we felt it was important, and I have received a ton of feedback, both people saying to me, "You have not gone nearly far enough," and people saying, "There is not enough evidence for you to go as far as you went." And I want to talk a little bit about that, because I think it's really important as we move forward. There is, there is not solid evidence on either side of this with COVID-19 spread and how face coverings, what, at what level face coverings reduce the amount of spread. There is a lot of research that's being done, and the evidence is all over the place. It comes out, some saying it's very effective, some saying it's not very effective. So what we do know, though, is that nearly all public health experts agree that face coverings will block the large particles associated with COVID-19. And that is why we move forward with really focusing on social distancing first and face covering only in the scenario where you can't meet the social distancing of six feet. That is, as you know, similar to the way that New York went forward. We, we do not have all of our counties around us moving forward with this. We have some at this point. I know that it's us, it's Denver County, or City of Denver, sorry, and also Laramie County. So those are the three that I'm aware of that are around us that are moving forward with us. Again, there's been a ton of debate about this, and we feel like it is extremely important as we go into these lifting of orders, that we are really doing everything we can. And again, just like you all were so successful at keeping the spread of this disease down because you followed those, those orders, it's going to be up to all of us to be able to keep the spread under control as we move forward into this next, this next state. And that social distancing of six feet, maintaining that, if you can't maintain that social distancing of six feet, wearing a mask to help reduce the spread of the disease is going to be really important. I want to make sure I'm saying that for the general public, we're talking about face coverings that are cloth. If you can't get face coverings that are cloth, we have a link on our site to CDC, which talks about other materials that you can use that are in your home. But we don't want people to go out and, and order N95 masks or surgical masks, which are still, at least the N95s are still at, difficult to get a hold of, and they need to go primarily to our healthcare workers or those folks who are dealing with the disease day in and day out. Also, masks are not a panacea, so we don't want people to forget the importance of hand washing, not touching your face, sanitizing surfaces, and when you're wearing a mask, taking care of the mask itself. And again, we have information on our website about how people can do that. The, the last thing that I wanted to say here before I go into the data slides is, again, just the purpose of the mask is for me to protect you and you, you to protect me. So I wear the mask to protect you by, by stopping the spread of those droplets, and you wear the mask to protect me. So there's been a lot of supportive messaging around, "We are in this together, we can make a difference, we can, we can support each other by making sure we're following these, these guidelines, and we're really paying attention to it as we move forward." That's what will help us be successful in continuing to move forward and not have to go back in the future. And then if we can go to the slides at this point, thank you. So this first slide, again, is just representing our total number of cases that we're at today. This is 668 total cases today. Again, the pieces that I want to make sure that I'm pointing out here are that the majority of our cases, or I'm sorry, the majority of our, our deaths are still associated with long-term care facilities. I've mentioned last week that we have an entire team that's been assembled around long-term care facilities. We have liaisons that are working with each facility. We've paid a lot of attention to the facilities to help support them in doing everything that we can to help them reduce the spread of the disease. We've worked with them to, to generate isolation plans that were, that were required by the governor through an order a couple of weeks ago. And, and all of our facilities have responded to us, which has been incredibly positive. The governor's also formed a strike team at the state level that's been in place now for about two and a half weeks, and they are working in conjunction with local public health agencies to support the same process. So there's been a lot of effort put into this, this whole entire focus on long-term care facilities. Next slide. This is our total case count per day. We, I am, again, the, the anomaly that's in April there is based on a delayed reporting in cases, so that's why that spike exists. We did some testing last week, and I haven't yet gone back to compare if the spike that you're seeing on the May dates are associated with our testing, or if that's something else. So I apologize, I haven't been able to do that analysis, but we're keeping a close look at this. Next slide, please. This is just demonstrating the number of cases in the orange that you're seeing there that are relative to long-term care facilities. So we're still seeing, and it's, we know that, we know that this is difficult. Once we have cases inside these facilities, it's difficult to control the spread of the disease in these, in these facilities. And you can see that there, at least over the last week and a half, there's still been a large number of positives that are coming from these facilities. The other thing I want to mention that I didn't mention when I was talking about long-term care facilities just a second ago, is that the state is also working with us to test the, the facilities that don't have any positives in them yet. And that's about 50% of our total long-term care facilities in Boulder. And they are working statewide with facilities that don't have positive cases to do testing and try to make sure they're identifying asymptomatic cases that could be in those facilities to prevent the spread of the disease further within those, those facilities that don't yet have positives. So there is a pretty large effort that's occurring to continue focus on that. Next slide, please. This is our average number of cases in Boulder County. So, so here on this graph, if you look across, you can see, again, that averages around 21 cases per day right now, and it's slowly increasing. We would expect this trajectory to continue to increase as we increase more testing moving forward. And pretty soon, we'll be able to, we'll be able to actually graph the number of tests per day. So we'll be able to look at the number of tests per day and how that increase is associated with the average increase in cases. Next slide. This is case rates, and I need to read a statement here, because these have changed from last week, and I don't want to get it wrong. So bear with me for a second. I'm just going to read this. This is from our Epi team, and the reason that these rates have changed a bit is because, I mean, I'm just going to read it. "This week, we're moving to a new system of coding residents into municipalities. Previously, we've been using the town or city that was listed in a person's address, but that is not the most precise method of determining the municipality that a person resides in. With the addition of team members on our Epi team, we were able to assign each case a more precise municipality based on geo-coding tools." So that's why there's, there's been a difference in the, in the total rates. We've been able to get more precise. If anybody really wants an in-depth explanation associated with that, I'm happy to connect them with, with our epidemiologists to talk more about that. But you can see that the, the, the main, the main case rates, again, are in, right now, Louisville and Longmont. And I want to make sure I say this every time we look at this, because until we get to comprehensive testing, which, again, we're identifying as roughly 500 tests per day, we, we are still only seeing the number of people that can get tested or that have been able to be tested based on the number of tests available. So this doesn't represent a comprehensive picture of everybody in our community that's going to be positive. And we know that we will be getting to that point as we move forward over these next several weeks. Next slide, please. Next slide, it's just not advancing on, whoops, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my slide. Thank you. And this is just, I just want to remind us again that most of the cases are still in these two age groups. We really haven't seen much of a shift in that. It's the 20 to 29-year-olds and the 50 to 59-year-olds. Next slide, please. And again, when we're looking at impacts associated with the deaths that we see and the hospitalizations that we see, the majority of those are still in that 50 to 80-plus year-old age range. So we know that it's, it's having more severe impacts on our older population, especially those with underlying conditions. Next slide. This just demonstrates, again, as I talked about last week, that we're still seeing community-wide spread. The orange bars are community-wide spread of the virus. So non-person-to-person, not able to identify where the source of the exposure is coming from. Almost, virtually all travel has been eliminated now in terms of a source of infection spread, and we're seeing more person-to-person as well. And that's because we have people who are spreading the disease among their family members. And in some cases, it's difficult when somebody's in a house and they're positive. And we also know that that's associated with long-term care facilities that have person-to-person spread. Next slide, please. This is, again, our race and Hispanic origin data. And as we saw last week, we're continuing to see unequal impacts in, in who this is impacting in our community. We have been targeting and working with our cultural brokers to think about as we have testing available going forward, and we do, we do have testing moving forward in Lafayette, as an example, community-wide testing. And we are reaching out specifically to some of our Latinx populations to make sure that they know that that testing is available for anybody who has symptoms at this point that are living in those communities, because we know that the impact is unequal at this point. Next slide, please. This is that Metro Denver data, case rate per 100,000. Boulder County stayed pretty much the same. Next slide. We have bumped up here a bit. This is mortality rates in Boulder County, and the lowest at this point is Douglas County. And, but we have bumped up a little bit. You see that ours is climbing slowly. Next slide. This is, again, total hospitalizations. And again, there is a lag in the reporting on this, but you can see that Boulder County has remained real, really slow in terms of growth. Really, this is considered a very stable hospitalization rate. And when I show you the next slide, you'll see this new slide that I put in, which is actually the number of patients hospitalized in Boulder County hospitals due to COVID-19. And we see a pretty steady decline from that peak. And this is also, we are in weekly contact with our hospitals through a call that we have on Tuesdays, and we are getting the same data back from hospitals. So they're telling us that they're seeing the same things. Next slide. This is the number of medical surge beds available in Boulder County hospitals. This has stayed pretty steady with a few ups and downs, but is on a very slight decline if you, if you were to look at an average here. Next slide. This is good, number of ICU beds available at Boulder County hospitals has slowly been increasing. Next slide. This is number of acute adult critical ventilators available. And again, you can see that most of these graphs are still showing that we're slightly improving, but we're definitely not seeing any issues that are becoming problematic for our hospitals in our county. Next slide. This is the number of COVID patients that are admitted or discharged at the state level. And I just want to focus more on the, on the top blue line there, which just, again, shows that total hospitalizations across the state of Colorado have been in a slow decline from around the April 18th, between the April 18th and 23rd time period. Next slide. This is the total number of tests that are performed in Boulder County. And again, what we'll be able to do in the, the pink bars that you see on the bottom there are serology tests, and I think, I'm not positive, I would need to validate this, but I know that Boulder Community Health is doing some antibody testing. And I know that Dr. Vissers is on the phone tonight. He could probably talk more about that. But I'm not aware of other sites in Boulder County that are yet doing that. And we will be able to, as I mentioned before, graph our total test per day by the time we get to next week, I'm hoping. So you'll be able to say, see what that looks like over time as we move forward, and we can demonstrate that we are increasing our testing as we move forward. This is my last slide, and I'm going to turn it over to, to Dr. Vissers.
Great. Am I unmuted? And you can hear me?
Yes, you're ready to go.
Excellent. Well, thanks, Jeff. I just want to echo the comments that, that Jeff made, and we really are doing much better, I think, than, certainly than what was anticipated. And, and most of that credit goes to the actions of city council, our state government, and then, but in particular, our community. And we really are seeing a sustained decline. And I thought I'd share some data with you, what we're experiencing right now at Boulder Community Health. The other thing I wanted to highlight is, consistent with the state guidelines and some of those being lifted last week, we did start doing elective surgeries last week, and those have gone extremely well. well. And we are starting to become more busy. And then my concern that I expressed a few weeks ago about people not seeking care, we are starting to see more people feel more comfortable come to the hospital. But certainly, when we look back in April, we saw a significant decline in people presenting with stroke symptoms and cardiac symptoms, in some cases, up to 60% less than April the prior year. So we know there are a lot of people out there with concerning symptoms and disease. And, and the other important message is, please do not hesitate to come to the hospital, call EMS, reach out to your provider, our provider. We're here, and it's safe, and you need to get the care that you normally would be getting. Right. So am I able to move the slides, or should I ask you to, next slide? Great. This is just an overview of where the patients that we've been taking care of up until this point. And so we've had a total of 43 COVID-positive patients. Right now, as of this morning, I'll show you the data later, but we're down to three in the hospital. Now, the burden of the COVID patients is a lot more than this. And if you recall at the beginning, we had a lot of patients that were suspected to have COVID or COVID ruleouts. And in some cases, it was taking six, seven, eight days to get the test back. And so in the interim, they're being treated exactly the same, requiring the same level of isolation, PPE, and precautions that we would with COVID patients. So the burden was much higher than that. And then these patients, of course, stay in hospital for an extended period of time. But overall, of the 43, 40 either have died or been discharged, but 33 or 83% are discharged. We did have seven deaths. Most of them actually came from senior living facility. And we only had one that died that was on a ventilator. The majority of these were comfort care only. And actually, we're, we're not in the facility very long. Next slide. Here's a little bit more details about our patients. We had anywhere from one day to 41 days, and we just had someone leave hospital on Sunday that had been here, I think, 44 days. And, but on average, it's about eight days. When they go on a ventilator, obviously, their length of stay is much longer, and, and the time they're on the vent is about nine days. It's a little bit skewed. We had one patient that was on briefly. And as I mentioned, of the four, we have had one death. So only about 10% of our patients admitted end up on the ventilator. This is significantly lower than what we're seeing nationally. And a 25% mortality on the ventilator is also significantly lower. Nationally, it's been around two-thirds. Next slide, please. This is our data this morning. And so you can see, even just two weeks ago, we had over 20 COVID-positive and pendings in the hospital. This morning, we just had three positives. Our pending number is much lower because our tests are coming back quicker, and there's less people presenting. And we have two of those in the ICU, but nobody on, requiring ventilation. Also, in terms of our employees, we only test employees if they're symptomatic, of course. And we've tested almost 150 employees, and so far, only about 10% of them positive. The vast majority, when we've done tracing, most of these occurred early on, and the vast majority were community-acquired. Next slide. This is just some demographics in terms of the admitted patients. So despite having a significant number of 20 to 29-year-olds infected in Boulder County, we have not admitted anybody under 30 years of age. And the majority of our admissions still are 60 to 90-plus. And in terms of our mortality, we had one patient between 16 and 69. The others were between 70 and 95. Next slide, please. Great. Okay, that's it. I have a few other things to share. Since we started our elective surgeries, we followed the guidelines that we worked through as collectively with the hospitals, the other hospitals, and the state, to make sure that we retain capacity should any surge occur. And so, so far, we're maintaining 30% capacity, and that can ramp up very quickly. And we can certainly ramp down surgeries quickly. It also is contingent upon available PPE and testing. And we're in a much better place than we were even just a few weeks ago with regards to that. We test every patient 48 hours prior to their surgery. And I'm not sure what to make of this data, but it, it sounds great. It's a, it's a, obviously, a bit of a biased sample. But so far, of the 165 patients that we've tested preoperatively, we've had no positive COVID tests. Obviously, it's a little bit skewed. These are patients awaiting surgery, hopefully taking care of themselves, and perhaps a little less exposed. But still, I find that reassuring. And that's probably the first sample that we've done. That's outside of our employees and sick patients and admitted patients. The other piece of good news to add is that, starting this Thursday, we will be offering drive-through testing, both on our campus, here in Boulder, and then out in Erie. We anticipate, as of Thursday, we'll be able to do 100 tests per day. And we think probably by next week, we'll be able to accelerate up to 200 tests per day. For now, this is all part of a tiered response in terms of being able to test. This will be expanded to patients who are symptomatic, and who talk to their provider, and the provider feels that they would be beneficial in getting a test. But again, anyone who has some symptoms, you don't necessarily need to be sick enough to come to the hospital or go to the emergency department. But if you, you have some symptoms, and you're concerned that you might have coronavirus and COVID, then please contact a provider, or go to our website, and there's a link to, that will get you to a provider that can screen you, and set up an appointment to be tested. So that should help a lot with Jeff's data as well. I think those are the main things I wanted to share with you today. And I think Jeff and I were both going to take questions together, since there tends to be a lot of overlap.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Dr. Visser. Your visits are always appreciated. I have three questions so far, Mark, and then Rachel, and then Mary. So Mark?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. It really was quite helpful. Like, like many people, I occasionally will watch the briefings in New York from Governor Andrew Cuomo. And in those briefings, he talks about a rate of transmission statistic, with the understanding that if the rate of transmission is above 1.1, that is bad, because it means that the disease is actually increasing. And if it is below 1.1, it means that there's some indication that the curve is downward. Do we track rates of transmission on that basis? And if so, what do our rates of transmission look like?
From, this is Jeff with Boulder County Public Health, and we are not tracking that. I know the governor is looking at that at a statewide level, and I'm not sure what that rate is at. That is, that is related to that R0 value that I've talked about and showed graphs on before. I'm not sure, Rob, if you know the answer to that.
No, I just don't think we have enough general testing to tell. However, we do track the doubling time. And so the doubling time is also important. So how, how, how many days does it take for the population to double the number of people that are infected? And when this first came about in March, it was between, you know, it was around one and a half to two and a half days. And, and this is based on data we're seeing in terms of hospitalizations. So it's extrapolation from that. But we're now around, I don't know, last I looked, we're 15 or 16 days. So, and that's what we keep talking about in terms of the slowing. And so, so that's significantly slowed the spread within the community. I don't know how that translates to an R0, but I would think there's some correlation between the doubling time dropping and the R0 dropping significantly.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great, great, gentlemen, Mary.
Okay, thanks. Thank you both for being here. That's always so helpful and informative. Just a couple of follow-up questions. Number one, I was going to ask you if we were going to get drive, drive-through testing. So I was excited at the end there, when you said that's forthcoming, it sounds like this week. And wondering, I think there will be a lot of interest in that. Where can people go to get more information? And, and also, will it eventually move into a scenario where you don't even need to call your healthcare provider? I see that a lot of counties are doing like, no doctor's order.
Yeah. So, you know, then, as we increase the ability to do testing, then it will be expanded to patients who are asymptomatic, and, and, or community members, and community members that, and not requiring providers' order. And right now, the, the interaction with the provider is to see that, whether you are symptomatic, and, and if it makes sense. And also, because we have limited numbers to set up the appointments. So I can't tell you when we'll be able to expand it. Hopefully, our, our testing continues to ramp up, and we're able to expand that. But in the short term, if you do need to get the appointment, just go to the BCH website, or if you have a provider that's affiliated with BCH, they can order one as well, and you just reach out to them directly. If you don't have a provider with us, if you go onto the website, then we'll link you to a nurse practitioner or a doc who can quickly screen you by phone or video and get you set up.
And, and would that be free? Like, I'm sort of thinking about people who don't maybe have providers, or easy access to calling their doctor, so they could go to your website and get screens through you all, maybe?
Yes. The, the, well, there will be, if you have insurance, then the insurance will be charged. But there's no payment for the patient themselves for COVID testing. No copays, or, or out of pocket.
All right, thanks. And then, next, I wanted to go back, and I think this probably is a question for Jeff, and I'm sure it's going to feel a little bit like beating a dead horse again. But on the county mask order for, that applies everywhere, that you are possibly going to be within six feet of anyone, we've gotten, as it sounds like you have too, a lot of questions and concerns by community members that there, there's either a, a super important need for masks outside, or there's no need for masks outside. And what I'm hearing the county guidance to be is, there is a need for masks outside anytime you're going to be passing within six feet. So I wanted to clarify and make sure that that is indeed the, the direction that we're getting from the county. And then also, to clarify whether that means, in your opinion, that that would apply on most trails and streets, because most sidewalks are less than six feet. You may be able to walk into the street, but you may not if you're passing someone. Same thing with trails. So I would sort of read the county order as saying that everybody would have to have a mask outside. So I wanted to get your opinion on that. And also, some clarification for community members, if you do pass somebody on the street or a trail, or wherever, and you're concerned, what is the mechanism for, are we supposed to report that? What do community members do when they encounter that? And I saw it's a, it's a hefty fine that attaches, $5,000. So I wondered if that applies within the city, or how that all works out. And then lastly, and I'm happy to repeat any of these, because I've asked a lot on the masks, does the county have like, a question and answer where community members on the website say could go and say, I disagree with the mask order. I've, you know, I'm looking at this expert on the national level, who's saying, you don't need masks outside. Why are you all saying masks? Is there anywhere that you can go and do like a Q and A that would maybe become public? I'll stop there for now.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can get all those. So in terms of the mask order itself, that's correct. If there's any, if, if you can't maintain six feet of social distancing, then that would be the time where you would want to wear a mask. And that is, that's obviously going to be more important indoors than it is going to be outdoors. And let me just give you a concrete example, so folks have a good sense. If you're walking past someone on the street, and you're passing them within six feet, the, the likelihood of exposure and risk associated with that is very low. If you're in an indoor environment, and you're in a store, and you're standing around somebody, you're within six feet, it's for a longer period of time, you definitely have a higher risk of exposure. So I don't, I, I had, I've had questions today, like, I'm riding my bike, you know, in Boulder Canyon, and I'm passing somebody on my bike, and it might not be within six feet. That's going to be a very low-risk situation. And I just want to be clear, too, that what we're taking, those, those fines that are in the order themselves are the maximum fines that are, that are mandated by statute. We would not obviously want to be putting people in jail for not wearing masks. We want to take an educational approach, and we're going to focus a lot on this. So the entire region, even though we're, we're one of the only counties besides Laramie and, and Denver, to have this order, we are taking a very progressive and a very, very forward-leaning social media campaign around masks, because we do feel like masks are one important tool, but they're not the panacea again. So we're going to focus on making sure that people know why it's important to wear masks, to do that in, in places where they can't easily maintain six feet of social distance. And we want to take an education approach. We're not just going to be going out and arresting people who are not wearing masks. We want people to really take responsibility. That's how we've been successful to this point, is because people took responsibility for themselves to follow those orders. And we think that people will take responsibility around social distancing and mask-wearing. Some of the assessments that were done in the counties surrounding us were pretty good compliance rates, all the way up to almost 89%, and most of them, most all above 65%. So we're going to continue to push and press on that. But I want people to just know that it really does come down to them taking responsibility to follow this. And it's going to help our businesses stay open. It's going to help us reduce the spread of the disease if we can do this. So we really want it to be an approach where people are taking responsibility for themselves. So I, I hope that helps. But you also brought, I think you brought up trails, sidewalks. So again, if you're going to be within six feet, ideally, you'd be wearing your masks. Lot less risk if you're passing somebody on the street. When you're on trails and it's tight, we would want people to wear masks. We've been talking about that message pretty consistently. We've been, I've been saying it here. We've been putting it in our social media campaign. We'll be doing more messaging around that. We have a regional group that meets and talks about, how can we support people on trails to make sure that they are social distancing, or that they are wearing masks? So that'll continue. All of that will continue.
Thanks. A couple, I just want, you know, we're getting a lot of questions from people who are having conflict on trails. So if they do encounter somebody on a trail who is not compliant, is that supposed to still come to your reporting hotline that we were using earlier?
Yes, thank you. I didn't answer that question. It's the, I, I'm sorry, I don't know that number right off the top of my head, but we have a hotline. If you just go to Boulder County website, you'll see that there's a, a call-in line. You can call in. It's a 720 number. It's pretty well advertised. If you go to Boulder County Public Health, COVID-19, and you search for that, it'll come up. And you'll be able to pretty quickly and easily find that, that call center online.
Okay. And then the last thing, and it may just be a suggestion, is if there were a place that people could go and communicate directly in a more open format, like, why are we being told to wear masks on trails? What is the evidence for that? And have some back and forth, that might be helpful.
So, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Rachel.
No, you go ahead.
Yeah, we have not set anything like that up, and nor do I want to get into spending a lot of time debating research back and forth, because there's a lot of it out there on both sides. And I think as we move forward into the weeks ahead, we're going to see more and more research coming associated with this. But it's not an effective use of time to debate science back and forth. Again, if you look at what a lot of folks have done in public health, they have put mask orders in place. There is, there is agreement among public health experts that face coverings will reduce the large droplets. It's not going to reduce everything, and there's debate about how much it will reduce it or not. But it is one tool that's effective in terms of moving forward and reducing the spread of the disease.
Thanks. And then one last question I have, is under the, the next phase of orders that'll be coming out, because our, I think the next, the last one's expiring on the 8th, Sunday, the night, somewhere in there. Do you know when roughly we would be looking at opening restaurants? We're getting a lot of requests to maybe use parking lot space or outdoor spaces for restaurants. So I'm wondering if you know sort of when that might be coming down, and also if that would be something that you would advise the city to look at? Is it going to be healthier for people to spread out and eat outside?
So under the safer-at-home order, there is, there is a restriction to curbside-only or delivery. So I think everybody knows that. I, we did ask that question on our statewide call today. And we were told that more guidance would likely not come out until the end of May, because we are already at a reduced social distancing. I have heard really loud and clear from both the governor and from CDPH that they want to make sure that they're watching what's happening through the month of May. As I think I, I talked about before, there's a delay by the time somebody's exposed, when you lift these orders, to the time that they would actually show symptoms, get testing, end up in the hospital. And we don't want to move too quickly. It's really important that we don't move too quickly. And that's been a lot of the debate that's happening nationally right now as well. So what I heard today from the state was towards the end of the month, there would be more guidance around potentially what restaurants might look like moving forward. And they, they are, I know their intention is to set And they are, I know their intention is to set up, if they haven't already done it, a work group to, with restaurants to start to think about some of these things.
Awesome, thank you.
Very.
Thank you, Jeff and Dr. Visserz, for being here tonight. We're going to miss you when this is over. But my question is likely for Jeff. And I was curious as to what the criteria is for testing, to qualify for testing. You're talking about drive-through, you're talking about if you have your provider and you're set up with BCH. I mean, is there a criteria with a limited number of tests? And how does that align with disparities that we've been seeing?
Yeah, there, there is. And I won't remember them all off the top of my head. And I'm wondering if Dr. Visserz remembers those. And I can talk about how we are looking at those communities that are, that we know are having higher impacts, as demonstrated in our data.
It's, it's like anything where it's a tiered response depending on when you have a limited resource, which we have had a significant limitation for some time now. So it started with healthcare providers and admitted patients. And from there, it was extended to patients who were not necessarily requiring admission but symptomatic and had greater vulnerabilities, in particular, immune compromised and some other patients like that. Then we've started to extend it to other hospitalized patients. So a woman who comes in in labor and trying to do some rapid testing. And, and there's probably some steps I'm missing in between, but the, the next step that we're approaching is symptomatic patients in the community. And, and so part of our challenge is, we're not the public health entity. We're, we're serving our community and our patients. And so in order for us to meet that sort of next level, we do need to provide some screening to make sure that they are symptomatic. And so if anyone has any symptoms, at least as of this Thursday, we'll be able to test you going forward. I'm not sure what the next branch is, but I'm sure it's not far from there where we start testing asymptomatic patients for people.
Thank you, Dr. Visserz. And thank you again for your commitment to doing community testing as well. It's, it's what is going to help us get to that 500-per-day number. So I just want to thank you and all of your staff as well. So what we've talked to the state about and what others have been doing, as a couple of you have referenced already, is that when we have made it through those tiers of testing for symptomatic patients, and we don't have any left, then we would move to asymptomatic. And those symptomatic patients include our Latinx populations as an example. So we are outreach and trying to make sure that there is testing available for those folks around the county. We, there is a geographic map that we're looking at and have been working with our testing sites on to try to make sure we have some representation of testing north, south, east, west, to the best of our ability. And right now, west is probably the biggest challenge, and we're working on that. But we are reaching out directly. And then when we have met that testing need for all symptomatic people in the community, then we would move to asymptomatic, and we would probably start to prioritize the contacts of people who have been associated with a positive, just to make sure that we are prioritizing that population, because we want to be able to prevent the spread of the disease for people who we know have been associated with somebody who has been positive. And then move to asymptomatic people in the community at a broader level. Hopefully, that helps.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And I have a few questions to follow up with here as well. So the first one is for Jeff. A few of these are for you, Jeff. I think it's likely that we will adopt the county order, but keep a part of our current order in place, which would be that folks inside in places of public accommodation indoors need to wear a facial covering. Do you have any objections to us requiring facial coverings indoors?
No. And as I noted last week, I would support that. And I know there are potentially others that are thinking about that same thing, so I would support that.
Great, thank you very much. And then the next question applies both to this current phase that we're in, and then the, the phase that's going to come after we leave, stay-at-home, move to safer-at-home. How are we going to handle enforcement? And what are your hopes for the work with the city? So let's just say that everyone uses the 720 number that you put out, and there's a complaint about a business that has people in it, employees and customers who have no mask on, and it's in the city of Boulder. What would your staff do with that call? And what would you hope the follow-up would be?
So that's a great question. And we're going to have to work through some of this, because we're still not sure if other municipalities will move forward with their own ordinance that is going to be, or their own order that would be more restrictive. But what I would see is that we would link our staffs together to talk about, okay, if City of Boulder has a more restrictive ordinance, and we do, we do have right now a centralized call center that I know the City of Boulder is participating in. I think we would need to talk together with our call center to figure out what's the best way to route that? How do we support and leverage each other and make sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes and that we're working together? And we're, we'll just need to do that with each municipality or town that decides that they want to keep something more restrictive in place. But the idea would be that we would work with you in conjunction and in collaboration and not be, be stepping over each other.
Got it. And the reason I gave the example of employees in the business not wearing masks is because that's a governor's order, that employees in essential businesses have face coverings on. So I was trying to give an example that would violate the county order, for example. So if there are people in a store, the employee doesn't have a mask on, they're manning a register, and, you know, people are within three feet of them, that clearly violates the county order as well as the state order. So if a call came into the county in a case like that, you're essentially going to turn it to the city in some way or another. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So if it's, if your, if your, if your order is more restrictive, then that, whatever's more restrictive holds in that scenario. So if that was the city of Boulder, then we would turn that to you to determine how you would want to work on enforcing that. And obviously, we would just need to stay connected together so that we know what each other's doing. And that way, we can help messaging and vice versa. You could help messaging if it's something that, that falls under the county's order.
Great. So I have some follow-ups, but it looks like Tom Carr wants to speak. Tom?
Just real briefly, Sam, we have a, for the city of Boulder, a web, a email address, It's on our COVID-19 webpage. If you email that, that email address, it comes directly to me. I've gotten several complaints the last couple of days since we got it up there. I've called or written to every one of the businesses and gotten very positive responses from the businesses. We're happy to work with the county on that. But it's, it seems like a little bit of outreach does a lot of good with the businesses.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Jeff, another question that I've got. So I think enforcement is a work in progress. And so it, it looks like we just need to make sure to have our legal department, our police department, particularly code enforcement, and our city manager's office just all be clear on the way we're going to cooperate with the county on enforcement. So I won't, won't push on that anymore. After the 8th, so on the 9th, we are going to move to safer-at-home. And I've been getting a lot of questions about what that's going to apply to right away and what it might apply to later. So for instance, in the governor's order, after safer-at-home ran for a week or two, then retail was going to open up to people being allowed to go inside of retail establishments. Is that going to happen under the county orders coming on the 9th? And if so, will that be right away on the 9th, or will it be later?
So we will trans, transition immediately from our extended stay-at-home order directly into safer-at-home. The only thing that will be different from that, obviously, is our mask order. So we already have guidance that's up on our website, that's ready to go for safer-at-home, that will include all of those guidance documents. And again, that's, that's the benefit of us waiting that one week to make sure we worked with businesses, to make sure that was really clear. So I think we're in as good a position as possible to transition directly into safer-at-home at this point.
Okay, so just to make sure I followed that, I'm going to assume that the answer was yes, all retail establishments will be open for people to go indoors. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then how about personal service industries like haircuts, nail salons, massage therapy, personal trainers? Are those all going to be allowed starting on the 9th?
So I would need to go back and look at what our staff has put together. I don't want to answer it incorrectly. So instead of me trying to answer that, I'm happy to follow up with you, Sam, directly with that. We have a whole team, including a legal team, that is looking exactly at where do we have questions? Where do we need legal guidance for clarification? And what exactly is open associated with that new order?
Okay, yeah. I mean, there are a lot of people that don't know how to access this. I'm sitting here at the website, and I'm looking guidance for Boulder County future safer-at-homes. I'll read through this. And if I have any follow-up questions, I will ask you and copy counsel, because I think there will be a lot of people, you know, the, the initial governors, safer-at-home did not allow personal services to open up immediately. That was a week or two later. And, and so I'll look it over, but I think there will be a lot of businesses that have questions, some are making assumptions. So that'll be something that we need to work with the chamber and the council to make sure that the community is aware of what is open and what is not open. Rachel asked about restaurants. That's an example of one that we expect will come later, and you, you kind of confirmed that. So we will have to get this up on our website as well, just to make sure that we let our businesses know who can work and who cannot.
Yeah. Just to clarify, too, there is, we will not have any delayed openings between our order and safer-at-home. So it'll go straight from, I just want to be, make sure I'm really clear on this. It will go straight from the extended stay-at-home order directly to the safer-at-home. And the governor's website is safer-at-home, something like that. If you just search safer-at-home, it'll go to the governor's website, which does have guidance on it. Our website, in addition, will have specific guidance for businesses, for all those sectors, so that it's linked really well between us and the safer-at-home site on the state. But there is no delay between the ending of our order and the movement directly into safer-at-home.
Okay, very good. And there is information there at the safer-at-home website. And so you won't have delays, because the safer-at-home at the state level had certain things the first week and certain things the second week. You're saying that when we move into safer-at-home, we'll be wherever the state is in their rollout?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Very good. And then my last question is, say that this safer-at-home and the reduced social distancing does not keep the curve either flat or bent downwards, and we start to see a resurgence, what, what criteria are you going to use to decide if we need to go back to safe-at-home? Or, or stay-at-home, rather? What, what are the triggers that would cause you to, to look at going back to stay-at-home?
So it would be the same kinds of things. We will have testing in place. We will have FTE in place. So if we started to exceed numbers of daily cases so that we couldn't control, we couldn't do follow-up investigations with contacts, as an example, or we were starting to see concerns about surge in our hospital facilities, in addition to an early surveillance system that we've developed, and the city of Boulder has been part of this, which I really appreciate. I won't remember every component of the early warning system, but we do have an early surveillance system that's going into place in Boulder County, probably at the end of this week. Jane had the benefit of seeing it presented today in our administrators' meeting. It will give us a little bit of an early warning. It also allows us to, as we start to see some things happening in that early warning system, we can break it down by geographic jurisdiction. We will be able to go out to those jurisdictions and look at what might be happening in those jurisdictions that could be causing some of the indicators in the early warning system to, to be causing problems. Like, for instance, is there social distancing in place effectively in that community? What are we seeing in our case investigations in that community that might lead us to believe that something else is happening, that we need to be paying attention to? So we'll be looking at all those kinds of things, as well as, again, tracking those hospital surge capacities. And we are in weekly conversations with our hospitals, so we're able to ground-truth a lot of those kinds of things pretty quickly and frequently.
Great. And so I have one more question, but it is not for you, Jeff, or Dr. Visserz. It's going to be for our staff. I think it might be best delayed until we get into the COVID response discussion. Do any staff or council members have further questions for Jeff Saic or Dr. Visserz? Okay, seeing none, I will thank you both once again for being here with us. We really do appreciate these updates. They give us a lot of clarity, and we can then go message that out to our community through council and staff. So very helpful. I'm glad to hear the good news. It does look like hospitalizations are going down, which is fantastic, and testing is ramping up, which is similarly fantastic. So thank you again for all your hard work and for spending time with us.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Have a good night. Okay, so then Jane, I think we move into COVID response. Do you have anything you want to start with? I just have one question on my part.
Yeah, I do have something to start with, which actually I think addresses some of the questions that you were asking Jeff, Nayak. So Chris, if you could go to the next slide. So what we wanted to do as we started to talk about how the city is going to reopen is just to give a brief overview of how the community is going to reopen. So as, as Jeff said, after May 8th, we're moving from stay-at-home to safer-at-home. That's the order that is in effect throughout the state of Colorado, and it will apply here in Boulder County as well. So among the things that you were wondering about were restaurants, bars and coffee shops. And they continue to be open for pickup, carryout and delivery, and curbside delivery only. An example that you were asking about was some personal services. So hair salons, tattoo shops, personal trainers, massage therapists are open with very strict guidelines. And those are spelled out in the safer-at-home order. They certainly include face coverings for both the client and the service provider. Lots of other guidelines there, no waiting rooms, et cetera. We continue to close areas that are gathering places, like movie theaters and gyms. Field services, for example, real estate is one that's been, an issue is, will showings be permitted? They are. Retail, you asked about. So they are open for pickup, carryout, delivery and curbside delivery. And they are also open for in-store shopping with the strict guidelines, again, of face coverings. Then you can see the other items on here. I thank Tom Carr for preparing, preparing this slide for us, and we definitely can put this on the website for clarity for our community. So the, before we go to the next slide, let me just introduce sort of where we're going with the city of Boulder. So the city of Boulder is moving to a time where we're going from response to recovery. And we have created a team of folks that are really trying to figure out how we can do so safely to keep our community safe, to keep our employees safe. So we have created a matrix that we will be showing to you in a moment that will help the community understand in the early days where we're going, then over time, how it will evolve in order to keep people safe and to stay within our public health guidelines, because safety is our number one job. The person that is leading this effort is Pam Davis, who is the Assistant City Manager and also our Recovery Manager. So let me turn it over to Pam, and we can go to the next slide. Pam?
Hi, good evening, council. Thank you, Jane, for the introduction. As she said, I'm Pam Davis, Assistant City Manager, and I will be serving as the city's Recovery Manager into the foreseeable future. The purpose of tonight's update, as shown on this slide, is to update you about our broad recovery structure, and then also talk about our tentative operational plans for reopening certain city facilities and services. So as far as the recovery structure goes, we've put together five interdepartmental recovery teams. They'll be focused on issues around the community, economy, equity, finances and city operations recovery. And they're each going to be led by a different staff coordinator. So the purpose of these teams is not going to be to replace department operations that have been hard at work on response and now recovery. that have been hard at work on response and now recovery since the beginning. But we'll be working to ensure that the recovery work is well coordinated and collaborative across all departments since many of our activities overlap several different areas. So in a moment, our Operations Recovery Coordinator, Amanda Cole, is going to present the matrix to you all that Jane had mentioned that will summarize the city's current plan for gradual reopening over phases. This approach was developed over the last couple of weeks in partnership with every impacted department to determine the operations and services that will become possible as public health restrictions are gradually relaxed. So we will be available after Amanda's presentation for follow-up questions. And we also have several directors available for any more detailed operational questions. So before I turn it over to Amanda for the details, I did want to share a little bit just about the methodology we used to arrive at the plan. This plan is based on current and state and county public health guidance that you see here on this slide in front of you. That includes no convening of groups of 10 or more people in a single location, preventing exposure for vulnerable populations and no activities that would require shared equipment between multiple people. And in addition, the information that you'll hear in the matrix is based on operational capabilities, staffing and community need. And those things may shift even over the course of the next few weeks. Based on public health guidance, you know, there was mention during the previous briefing related to an early warning system that may tell us if we need to shift back into more of a response mode. City budget limitations, as you know, staff continue to work to address revenue shortfalls, which could impact the scope of services that the city may be able to provide as well as just the service's ability to remain open while maintaining social distancing standards. I want to just underscore that things may continue to change fairly quickly over the next few weeks. So I want to emphasize that this is our best current approach that may continue to alter as we learn more. So now I'd love to turn the presentation over to Amanda Cole, who will present the details of our reopening approach.
Great. Thank you, Pam, and hopefully you can see me and hear me okay. Good evening, Council. My name is Amanda Cole. I'm the Operations Recovery Coordinator. If you could go to the next slide. This again, what I'm going to talk about tonight is focused on the reopening of city facilities and reopening of city services. We've used the matrix that you see here on the screen. You may remember it from a couple of weeks ago. This has been our tool to explain by our four phases of recovery, what are the large categories of services that will be reopening in different ways. I'm going to pause here on this screen to explain what we mean by each of the phases before we move on. And I'll explain the definition of each of those categories across the top. Starting with phase one, you can follow me at the top of the screen. Phase one is the month of May. Generally, it's the phase we're in currently. It's called Safer at Home aligning with the state order. This phase will respond to the state's Safer at Home guidance and the extension of Boulder County's State at Home order. The goal is to retain 60 to 65% social distancing. You'll notice as I get into the details, most of our current operations and facilities will remain in their current state with a couple of adjustments as we can maintain those social distancing requirements. Phase two is tentatively scheduled for June 1st. This is aligning with our tentative date to reopen city facilities. And this is our effort to reopen those facilities and services in accordance with the public health guidance at the time. This may shift as we learn more about how the Safer at Home guidance is working. Phase three doesn't have a timing associated with it other than it will follow phase two. This is somewhat out in the distant future. This phase will reopen many additional city services and facilities with restrictions on gatherings and protections for vulnerable populations. We'll be better able to define what that phase means as we see how the summer goes. Phase four, the timing of that as well is undetermined. This is the phase that will return services to what we're calling new normal when essentially recovery is over and there's no need, no further need for overarching public health guidance. So that phase is quite a bit away from us. Next slide, please. You saw across the top of that matrix, six big buckets of categories. And I'm going to run through them from left to right to explain what's included in each of those. Starting on the left with community programs, that includes community engagement events, library programs and recreation programs. Parks and public gathering areas includes mountain parks, public picnic tables and shelters, public restrooms and urban parks. Customer-facing service centers includes the municipal building, open space and mountain parks, hub, parking services, planning and development services, tax and licensing and utility building, billing, along with our other smaller customer-facing service centers. Community facilities includes the age well centers, library, municipal court and the recreation centers. Employee offices are to categorize all the other employee offices that aren't addressed in another category and is specific to admin offices that are currently closed. Special events and travel are particular to city hosted events, city permitted events and employee travel. Next slide, please. What you see on the screen here is phase one, again, what we're calling the Safer at Home phase to align with the state's branding and will generally accompany the month of May. To orient you to how the matrix is laid on, laid out on the next couple of slides, you'll see two gray bars, the top one being what's different in this phase, the bottom one being what's the same in this phase. I'm going to walk through primarily what's different in each of the phases with a couple of highlights from what's the same. Starting from left to right again, so what's different starting in May? The Boulder Reservoir is planning to open in a limited capacity for passive recreation and boating. You'll see here we'll use the term limited open. And that was a concise way for us to explain this includes modified operations. It's dependent on each service and facility. And we can explain more about what the details of those are, but that's what limited open means. Flatiron's golf course opened this past Friday and is open in a limited capacity. In addition, sports courts, so basketball courts, tennis courts, et cetera, and specialty parks, so dog parks, skate parks will be opened in a limited way for trial individual use to see how we can work accompanying individual use. The other change primarily in phase one is related to the library. Starting on May 18th, they'll have a call center with patron carryout of the held items that have been held over the past couple of months by appointment only during limited weekly hours. In addition, the municipal port will be open and is aligned with the county operations. For the month of May, everything you see in the bottom half of the screen is generally the same. All in-person community programs are canceled. I'm reading from left to right again. Under parks and public gathering areas, picnic shelters and tables are closed as well as concentrated use areas, nature centers, shelters and picnic areas within the open space and mountain park system. All of our service centers are offering virtual services and will continue to do so during the month of May. Rec centers and pools, as well as the age well centers are closed. Essential services staff remain operating in bill, in essential buildings and everything else is teleworking. There's no non-essential travel for staff through May 31st and no special events through June 15th, which is the state state for special, special events. The only exception we're trying to make for that is for the Boulder County Farmer's Market to modify their operations in order for them to be able to open. You can go to the next slide, please. This is phase two, again, tentatively beginning on June 1st. You'll see, just orienting you again to the side, this is about a 50/50 split with what we're able to open in a modified operational state. I'll again read from left to right. Community programs. Recreation programs will be limited open for small group and by capacity only. Sports courts and specialty parks will open based on capacity caps rather than individual use as in the previous phase. The Boulder Reservoir will add in limited open contracted programs and then playgrounds will also be limited open. For customer-facing service centers, the Parking Service Office will be open in a limited capacity for in-person walk-up appointments. Though they would prefer appointments and we'll offer those as well. The PNDS Service Center will be open by appointment only for in-person services. Under community facilities, the library is considering in mid-June to accept materials returned and will assess the ability to provide home delivery to vulnerable community members and provide phone and email reference services for Carnegie. The rec centers and pools will be limited open as we're able to do that again, considering that we have financial and operational and public health considerations still to be worked out. For employee offices, essentially the only change here, this is following the state's guidance for essential services is to incorporate functions that support essential services. Everything else generally remains the same. And then we will be looking at whether there's a travel limitation extension for city staff. Across the bottom there, generally, everything remains the same that I haven't mentioned yet. With the exception of, we expect some additional guidance from the state on special events there on the right bottom corner. Next slide, please. So phase three is when we see a lot of things move up from the what's same, what's the same in this phase to what's different. So this is when we'll start to see a lot of incorporation back into our normal operations. Again, I'll read from left to right. Community programs, community engagement, we're hoping that we can offer limited community engagement for gatherings of less than 50 people. That number may change depending on what's the current best practice as we get closer to this phase. Recreation centers or recreation programs, excuse me, will also be limited open. Under parks and public gathering areas, generally, all of the facilities covered under this category will be open, if not a limited open with some exceptions and some restrictions if necessary. All of the customer service centers will be open in a limited capacity. Maybe managing the number of people that are there in a, in the lobby at one time, trying to facilitate appointments throughout all the service centers. Community facilities, starting with the library, they will look to start doing carryout and public computing with no seating or a socially distanced approach to seating and gathering and also opening their media production studio by appointment. Rec centers, pools and Age Well West Center will be limited open in alignment with public health guidance. For employee offices, those will start to be open in phase three. Though as we are able to, teleworking will still be encouraged with limited use of common areas and no gatherings of 50 or more people. For special events and travel, again, we expect further state guidance, particularly on gatherings, but expect very limited special events. Aligning with the public health guidance at the time could include essential services events or those with approved modifications or exceeding public health guidance. We expect that limitation to be 50 or 50 or less people, but it could be different at the time. You'll see at the very bottom what's saying, what's the same in this phase for phase three. No guard, no large gatherings with more than 50 people. Modified operations will probably still continue for city services and employee teleworking will continue. Next slide, please. So phase four, like I said at the beginning, this is our new normal. We don't understand what that looks like yet. But essentially, our goal is to arrive at phase four where there's no more restrictions, limitations, public health guidance and that we're able to fully operate facilities and services across all of these categories. With the exception at the bottom there, we have made some beneficial and productive process improvements, improvements in technology and teleworking practices that if we've made something that's beneficial to the community that we wish to continue, certainly that would be able to stay the same. The next steps, we'll be working on criteria for understanding how to move back and forth between the phases and understanding how to be flexible. As the previous preventer, presenters have said, this will continue to change over time. So we'll be working on criteria to help us understand how do you move from phase two to phase three or back up? This will all also all be communicated through several communication channels, including our website, particularly for phase one, the phase that we're in currently, with details becoming more available for the further phases as we continue. That's the conclusion of our presentation for the phasing plan. Again, as Pam said, we have several directors on the line that can help answer any detailed questions you have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for those presentations. Jane, you ready for questions?
Absolutely.
Great. So any council members with questions who want to put your hand up? I don't see any right now, so I'm going to ask a quick one. This follows up on Rachel's previous question. We now have a county order that says more or less, if you cannot have six feet of social distance on trails or on greenways, that a mask needs to be worn or a face covering needs to be worn. Are, will we be changing the signs that we have at trailhead and entrances to greenways to reflect the new reality that since our trails are not typically more than six feet wide in a lot of places, that it would be best advised to have face coverings on trails? So I would just ask Dan or Jane, are there plans to update any signage based on the county order?
So I'm going to turn that over to Dan.
Yeah, Sam. Hello, Council. Absolutely. We are in the process this week of changing of new sign designs, changing out signs to reflect the new face covering county order. And so we should start to see installation of those coming in the next few days.
Great, thank you. I hope they make as strong a case as possible for face coverings, even if they say something like, wear a face covering when you're on O S and P, that would be fine, at least with me. I don't know about rest of council. And then on greenways, I know that few greenways are part of O S and P, but many of them are not. So Shane, who would be best to, to talk about?
I think also the greenways are transportation. I don't know if Bill Cowan's on the call, since I think we gave him the night off. But the the same rules would apply and the same signs would.
I'm actually here, Jane.
How are you here? Hi, Bill. I thought we gave you the night off. I'm sorry.
You did.
But here you are.
Yeah, so we, we have been putting up signs on the Boulder Creek Path about physical distancing. Based on the conversation that we had at the last city council meeting, I've asked our staff to develop signs that tell people to wear masks. We're in the process of having those signs fabricated fabricated and installed now. Exactly which paths they should go on and at what frequency, we're still trying to figure out because we want to also be financially prudent, but we have ordered several hundred signs to install.
Great. And you've already ordered them, so this may be a little late, but we should probably focus on the term face coverings if possible, simply because masks has a connotation that there's surgical masks or some other kind of mask. And we want to emphasize that people can use a bandana or any other kind of cloth fabrication that covers their nose and mouth.
I'll check on the wording. I think it was face coverings. And and definitely the language was to be construed more mandatory than advisory.
Perfect. Thank you. Mark has a question.
Yeah, we've gotten some emails and letters from employees in hair salons actually asking us not to permit them to open up because they don't feel safe. How are we going to balance those safety concerns, you know, with the need to open up and give people access to those kinds of services?
So we have made the decision to go with the governor's Safer at Home order. And the fact that Boulder County extended Stay at Home for an extra week was something that we agreed with. And so we are now almost through that extra week. It's this week. Then on Friday, we'll go to Safer at Home and that will apply. So we are not contemplating creating a new order that would prohibit nail salons or hair salons from opening. We're going with the governor's Safer at Home order.
But will we have any special requirements for keeping workers safe?
We don't have. We don't have any special requirements, but the safer at home order does provide guidance to these places of business. And as you do know, we have our own emergency order that we adopted last week that indicates everybody that is an indoor place of business has to wear a face covering. And that's different than the safer at home order. So that is our addition. You must wear a face mask even if you're more than six feet apart.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just comment as a follow on to Mark and Jane's exchange there. That I did go on the governor's safer at home website, the state safer at home website. And it breaks down many different kinds of business, which does include personal services. And there's any cleaning requirements in addition to masking and facial covering requirements. So I think it's worth all council members, I've just briefly looked at it, but it's worth a trip to that site from the county COVID site to safer home. And it, it, there's a lot of detailed advice to businesses if they're going to open. Erin, are you next?
Oh, can I just jump in for a second? Remind council that today, the Chamber of Commerce in partnership with others, including the city, conducted seminars for all the different businesses in Boulder. And they had over six hundred businesses apply to, to listen to the webinar. And we believe that many more did as well. And those one hour webinars were divided into the different kinds of businesses. So there was one for restaurants, one for retail, one for other sorts of things. And they went over very carefully the safer at home orders and what businesses needed to do to reopen. So I think that our community has been very proactive in providing businesses with the guidance that they need.
Great. Thank you, Jane. Erin?
I just also wanted to note that the governor has been very clear that no one can be compelled to go back to work in a case where they are not able to, say, because of childcare constraints or other family needs, or because they feel like they would not be safe if they came into work. So there are, the governor is watching out for employee protections at the state level as well.
Great, very good. I see no other hands up here. So with that, I'm going to assume that we're done with the COVID briefing and the response discussion. Again, I will say thank you to Dr. Visser's and Jeff. Thank you to Amanda for that great presentation and Pam about how we're going to move out of our current situation to phase one through four. And hopefully we get to the four quickly, but no faster than we can do safely. So thanks to everyone for all the work on the COVID response. Lynette, I think we're ready to move to open comments. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. There's a limit of two minutes for each person. And if you go much more than two minutes, your call will end up being muted. Again, I'll remind people, it's better if you're going to be a commenter to be watching the virtual meeting stream that was in your confirmation email instead of Channel Eight or YouTube because there's a delay there. We have eight people signed up for public comment. One of them, Mark Delban, has withdrawn, so we have seven. We'll start with Eric Castro, then Gary Erling and Ken Fenton. So Eric, the floor is yours.
Eric, you should be able to unmute yourself now and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Good evening, city council. My name's Eric. I'm a resident here in Boulder for three years and a student at CU's Master of Public Health and Social Work Program. And I'd like to speak with you today about Boulder's short-term homeless housing solutions. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for keeping the severe weather shelter open throughout all of March and April, as you did. And it was just great hearing how the East Boulder Community Center has been open for homeless individuals experiencing COVID symptoms. So regardless if the camping ban in Boulder remains legal or not, we need to come up with alternative solutions to reduce homeless deaths and improve coordinated entry system services. According to Kurt Fernheber, the majority of the homeless deaths in Boulder happened not because of lack of access to services, but because individuals were, for whatever reason, not engaging with the coordinated entry system. Boulder needs additional steps in its homeless care services to direct individuals who are not utilizing the housing options to safe designated locations. Longmont's pilot program of staffed RV safe lots is an example that we can look toward. Safe lots can provide a physical location to direct people toward basic security and restroom access, as well as help the city monitor those individuals who have not engaged in the coordinated entry system. Current cost estimates from Longmont are putting about seventy thousand dollars a year for security staff, as well as thirty thousand dollars a year for portable restroom and shower maintenance. In summary, camping bans are not enough. We need to provide alternative safe solutions for the people experiencing homelessness in Boulder. Designated safe lots are that solution. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Eric. If council has questions after open comment, they generally will ask or make comments after everybody else speaks. Okay, I'm going to go to our next speaker, mayor. You're muted. Sam, you're muted. Okay, looks like he might be having some.
Got it. So next we have Gary Erling, Ken Fenton and Lynn Siegel. So it's Gary Erling is up.
Okay, I was going to talk about COVID, but I'm going to change. And because of the date, I'm going to go back to my other favorite subject. And I'm going to say that I think I'd like to request that we support the Chicano members of our community. They came together in the past and helped save their country. Today, they're helping save Boulder by doing the hard work that we need. And I think eleven dollars an hour is not enough. So that's all I want to say today. I would, in addition, go back and say, you should take a hard look at your, your order about accommodation. When I look at accommodation, it doesn't say anything about indoors. And if you try to find out what accommodation means, it means something that accommodates a person, which mean, could mean a sidewalk, it could mean a path, it could mean a street. Basically, anything that accommodates people that's public, which goes in line with what Jeff and our governor has said. He wants masks in public and he wants distancing. I see both of those things missing in the city ordinance or unclear. Governor's words are very clear. Mask in public. And I'd also like to say that just stated, and what he's doing is as clear as, he's done really good work at looking at all the information that's available. And he's going to get all kinds of people trying to second guess him. And there's a word, I think it's counterpositive, and people will always argue for that. And you can't prove one way or the other that Jeff is wrong. You just have to support it.
Thank you, Gary. So next we have Ken Fenton, Lynn Siegel and Patrick Murphy. Mr. Benton, you're up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to use my time to tell you that government restrictions in response to COVID nineteen are immoral and should be ended immediately. To begin, my name is Ken Fenton and I'm a three-year resident of Boulder, a city which I love. As a graduate of the United States Air Force Academy and an officer in the Air Force for eight years, I served to defend the principles of freedom upon which this nation was founded. Generations of my fellow soldiers, sailors and airmen risked their lives for freedom, not for a society shackled by the edicts of local and state governments as we see today. Somewhere lost among the statistics of infection numbers and death rates was a discussion of morality, of whether or not our decisions were adhering to the basic philosophical principles upon which our country was founded. In the quest for safety, we traded freedom. While it was noble in one respect to attempt to save our neighbors' lives, we forgot that their life is theirs to decide what to do with, not ours. It is not our role to force our neighbor to live his life according to our mandates. Jefferson wrote in the Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal, that they're endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. The right to life is the right to self-determine your own life, not to force others to live as you see fit. The right to liberty and the pursuit of happiness includes the right of consenting adults to transact business in a mutually agreeable way without interference and threat from the government. The city has overstepped its moral bounds by restricting people's freedom. It is time for this great city to lead by example and remove all the restrictions placed on private businesses and individuals in response to COVID nineteen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Next, we have Lynn Siegel, Patrick Murphy and Sammy Lawrence. Lynn, you're up. Is Lynn Siegel on the call?
She was on the call a moment ago. And I unmuted her and I don't see her on the call anymore. We may need to come back to her.
All right, we will skip Lynn for now. If she comes back on the call, we'll let her speak. So we have Patrick Murphy, Sammy Lawrence and Stephen Heidel. Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Murphy, you're allowed to speak. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Hey, my name is Patrick Murphy. I live in Boulder. Just five out of nine, perhaps one more city council member can see that the muni has outstayed its welcome. Logical calculation based on time and resources reveals this. Unfortunately, vanity and arrogance have ruled for ten years and could rule for five more. The muni is not wise. It's vanity. Dollars and history don't add up. Honesty and critical review have not been real. Muni failures have been documented without a peep from the city manager or lawyer. Tom Carr responded in front of witnesses that the city didn't have to present the negative aspects of the muni effort because that was the function I provided, thus documenting that full truth was not the responsibility of the city. Though critical votes by citizens, including CU students, on the muni were statistically fifty fifty, clearly revealing about half of Boulder was against the muni, full steam ahead was the interpretation. It was a false interpretation fueled by bad leadership, bad legal decisions by subpar lawyers and financial shenanigans. Leadership of Boulder gets full credit for all the good things and full credit for all the failures. That's the way honesty works. Honesty is easier than deceit, but not everyone has learned that lesson. And Boulder hasn't learned that lesson once and for all. It's time to learn that lesson again. End the muni. Let real carbon reduction begin now, not five years from now. This is not Boulder's Valley Forge. It's Boulder's Vietnam, like the French at the Battle of Puebla. This isn't the end, but the beginning of the end. Let Boulder vote. Put end the muni on the November ballot now and perhaps save some lives.
So thank you, Mr. Murphy. We have Sammy Lawrence and Stephen Heidel. Sammy? Mr. Lawrence, you might want to unmute yourself and try and speak.
Thank you, sir. First and foremost, thank you, Rachel and Junie, for speaking about my address recently. For the safety of this city to not incur further risk liability, it's imperative that questions like this are continuously asked and all people able to answer them truthfully with accountability be given the time and platform, like me. Secondly, Tom Carr, you have been gaslighting me, breaking rules of decorum and utilizing lies of omission to paint you and Waylon Lilitha, characters of greater standing for the last year. April twenty first, twenty twenty was nothing new for you, but what's new as, as of April twenty eighth is that my case has been fully resolved and I'm speaking publicly, publicly to anyone seeking to hear slash spread the full truth. Thirdly, I must recant and say Tom Carr is right about something, that I am sad. I am witnessing city council members blindly follow a man who has a history of this behavior that got him kicked out of Seattle. Likewise, I'm sad because Tom was noted by the Daily Camera June twentieth of twenty nineteen for impeding my independent investigation with Michael Doherty. Proofs are on my Facebook with the hashtag SOS. Likewise, the month's one-year anniversary of this disabling assault, my significant other has left me. The woman who literally came out here to build a fountain, a second, a second life is no longer with me with fault of our own doing. Two sides, yet how is it that a governing body cannot show the same type of awareness as a disabled man with mental health issues? Furthermore, how did that Michael Doherty, a man who manages ninety employees and eleven thousand cases, can admit that he may have made a mistake and not the majority? Therefore, I welcome the majority to commit political and career suicide as you are choosing to. Please be my guest. I have tried long enough to save what I love, this community and all who are right within it. Now I will fight what I hate with the support of what I love with non-violence and civility. One more thing, it is very symbolic that I speak about this type of behavior. Once again, this mental health awareness month, because I can't help but remember the last time I spoke to a city council and addressed them in this regard. And I want to tell you personally, I forgive you and I hope you showed accountability and forgiven yourself. My name is Sammy Lee Lawrence the fourth. I am the dragon of the west and I am ready to speak to media. Hashtag SOS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. And finally, Stephen Heidel.
Sam, I will also note that Lynn Siegel's back in the meeting, so after Stephen, perhaps we could give her a chance to speak.
That's good.
Okay. Stephen, you should be allowed to speak and you maybe have to unmute yourself.
Okay, unmuted. Thank you, council. First, I want to thank you all for voting on option two on a twenty is plenty. It'll be great to have that implemented this summer instead of waiting around a couple of years. We also need your help on getting the transportation department to implement open streets or as they're being called around the world, COVID nineteen streets to give room for people to recreate. Paris has done four hundred miles, New York City, a hundred miles, all the way to Oakland, seventy-four miles. Denver's done, I think, twenty to forty miles of open streets during this crisis. The leadership will not come from our transportation department, it needs to come from city council. As we saw this weekend, the citizens of Boulder are getting frustrated and doing their own open streets. The cost of these per street was, I don't know, somewhere quarter between twenty and fifty dollars to do. Compare that to the thousands of dollars that was quoted by the transportation department a couple of weeks ago. It's showing we, we need your leadership to enact this. Also, places like Paris are taking this opportunity to further their Vision Zero plans. As they close down streets for COVID nineteen, they're keeping them closed or limited access to cars. As things get back to normal, they don't want the car traffic and the pollution from the cars to get back to normal. So we need your leadership. Transportation Department can't lead us. We need you to lead us. Thank you.
You, Mr. Heidel. And then let's try Lynn Siegel once again.
Then you should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Yeah. As evidenced by the one guy that most of this. What's going on here really is from this COVID discussion, we're making it up as we go. Nobody knows, you know, at the risk of stating the obvious. Yeah, nobody knows what's really going to happen. But I find that a lot of things that can't be handled that don't seem right. For example, firearms and liquor are called essential services. Yet, the city of Boulder, I found out this week, stopped construction of the black, the backbone of the, of the fiber internet system in our city, which should be a high, high priority, not an unessential service. Because look at everyone, no one sees, no one can communicate except with the internet. So I don't understand so many, there's not an iterative process here. I, I think you should just stop sub, public comment and public hearings. Just stop doing it because with two minutes and with nothing backing up, with real open houses, without predetermined outcomes, with. with an iterative process, an open process, we aren't going to change anything. And change has to happen fast, and it has to happen right, and it has to happen very broadly and with a broad democratic spectrum. And I'm seeing democracy is really getting shut down. You have eight people talking a night. That's not very much. We're talking about opening up here, and the United States has one third of known debt, even though it represents less than 5% of the world's population. I think it's not time to open up.
Thank you, Lynn. And that brings us to the end of open comments. I'll turn to staff and see if staff has any response to what they heard at open comment.
So, one of the residents made, I think, a factual error that we had stopped the development of broadband. We are continuing with broadband, and we're working to permit the first construction period of that. So that is full steam ahead, and that's just continuing. We also had a question about homeless services, and I believe that Kurt Fernhopper could say a few words in response to that. Kurt?
Evening, council. So, I want to agree with the speaker on his premise that we need to continue to look for ways to engage homeless individuals into services, and we continue to look for opportunities to do that. Before the coronavirus came to our city, we had planned to do a a study session on our homeless program, I think about a month ago. That was delayed. And we were intending to talk to you about safe lots and camping. We did look at other communities who had tried this. He referenced Longmont. Longmont has done a pilot project. I think it's five to seven vehicles that they're looking to pilot with, but it's not being funded by the city of Longmont. It's not a city of Longmont initiative, but they've allowed the pilot to occur. We did talk at CAC earlier this week about possibly having another homeless discussion with council in the month of July, and that can be one of the things that we could discuss in that session as well.
Very good. Thank you, Kurt. Any other staff responses to open comment?
Sam, I'd like to say a little, a couple of words about the folks closing the streets on their own. You know, Jane, a couple of weeks ago, mentioned the Uniform Traffic Control Devices standards. The reason that that's important is it sets the level for liability. Sadly, streets can be very dangerous places, and when someone gets hurt severely, there's always someone looking to say you deviated from some standard, which is why we very carefully follow those standards. I'm not going to say everybody's going to die if people put up their own signs, but there is an incredible liability risk for those people if they do it, and perhaps even for the city, if we allow it. Those signs are not approved, and they're encouraging people to go out in streets, which are dangerous places. So, from a liability perspective, for the city, I'd say it's not a great idea. And for those people who are doing it, they also have some risk if someone were to get hurt as a result of them doing that. That's why Jane talked about how important it is that if we do close streets, we do it in ways that meet national standards for doing so, so that, one, so that it's less likely that people will get hurt, and more, most importantly, but two, so that if someone is unfortunately hurt, the city isn't faced with catastrophic liability.
Very good. So, I see some hands, but let me first keep with staff here and say, is there any other staff response to open comment?
No.
Okay, great. So, Rachel, I saw your hand, but it's down.
Oh, sorry. I'll go ahead. So, following up on Tom's point, I guess I'm wondering, would it be possible that we, if we wanted to allow people, somebody just mentioned Longmont's allowing, I think it was Longmont, other organizations to pilot parking? If we wanted to allow people to pilot closing down streets, could we give people the information to follow the national standards and then say we would have hands off? Is that even an option? Because I assume that we can safely close streets because we do it for repairs and things like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't advise it. And if you're going to close a street, you should have city folks do it and city folks monitoring it, because the city's going to be responsible.
Okay. Seems like if we're going to do something like that, Rachel, it would be something all council would have to get behind. I think we've already discussed it, but again, if you'd like to send something to CAC and get something scheduled, we can do that. We want to have the conversation again. So, any other staff comment? That was follow-up on staff. Jane, anything else?
No.
Okay. Aaron?
Yeah, thanks. Well, I just, Tom, I hear your points. I just had to get in there. It does seem like many other communities across the country and the world are not adhering strictly to those signage standards as they're closing streets. So, I just put that out there. Just wanted to mention that.
People don't always listen to their lawyers.
Yeah. Okay, council. Are there any council comments in response to that? That's a comment.
I just have one brief one. Mr. Erling mentioned places of public accommodation. There's various ways to interpret public accommodation. Places of public accommodation is a quasi-legal term that talks about typically businesses that are required to receive the entire public without regard to race, religion, anything of that nature. And so, typically, not always, but typically they're indoors. And the idea, I think, with the order that Jane put out is we're trying to get all businesses that will be serving customers indoors to know that they need to have both customers and employees wearing a facial covering. So, anyway, in response, sidewalks and trails are also a type of public accommodation, but it's a different, it's owned by the government rather than being owned by private individuals.
Sam, may I read the definition in the order?
Sure, that'd be great.
It says, "For the purposes of this order, public accommodation means any place of business engaged in any sales to the general public in any place it offers services, facilities, privileges, or advantages to the general public."
Right, perfect. Okay, that was my only response. If anyone else has a response, now's the time.
Sam?
Yes?
I did have my hand raised, but you didn't see me.
I just saw it just now. Okay, Janine, go ahead.
That was to the previous comment on going back on the street signage. Again, I just wanted to mention that I would not support a street closure the way that it was offered to us, how we would just have two blocks close off in an area where we have not talked with community members. So I think if we are going to have an honest discussion about street closures, I would appreciate maybe some type of more thoughtful discussion about it, whereas we come with facts. Why should this particular street be closed? And why this particular area? Because I think that's very important that, and also another thing that I wanted to add, I'm not sure if that's a good idea to pass down the buck to community members to do street closures, because it could lead to people getting mad with their neighbors. So, I don't know what's going on in other communities, but I would not want to see it that way. I don't think it's our job to go around closing streets. And also, another thing I wanted to say, now that we are going to reopen the city, what does that mean for businesses as well? So, my thing is, I'm wondering if there are places around Boulder that has less traffic we can close, because to me, that was my biggest concern the whole time when we were talking about closing streets, was the fact that if it's a high-traffic area, I wouldn't want to just close it. What will be the access for community members? So I think we have to have more of an in-depth discussion about it if we're going to have that discussion. And I think staff should come up with better facts or something different. I just think the way it was presented before, I did not support it, and I would not support it moving forward, unless something better is shown.
Okay. All right. If no one else has comments in response to what was said, I think we're ready to move on to the consent agenda. Is that right, Lynette?
That's correct. Your consent agenda tonight contains items A through E, and it will be a roll call vote to adopt ordinance 8382.
Great. Does anyone have any comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. So Rachel has the second. Lynette?
We begin with Councilmember Swetlik.
Hi.
Wallach?
Hi.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gates?
Hi.
Young?
Yes.
Brockett?
Hi.
Brand?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to your public hearing of the evening, second reading of ordinance 8385, designating the property at 891 12th Street as an individual landmark.
Can I ask a quick question, Lynette? Do we have a poll-up consideration that we need to mention now or no?
We can, yeah. Let's go ahead and do that. It's a landmark alteration certificate for 1044 Maxwell Avenue.
Do any council members have any desire to call that up? I don't see any hands, so probably not. Okay, sorry to interrupt, Lynette.
That's okay. We can move on to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks. And this matter will be presented by James Hewitt of our Planning and Development Services Team. James?
Good evening, city councils. Nice to see you all. I'm going to do a short presentation here, if I can get it up on the screen. Let's see. I've hit the button at the top saying that I'm controlling the screen, so the PowerPoint should come up here. Am I right?
So, we, PowerPoint is up on the screen. You may need to change your view so you can see it. You can control a view up in the top right-hand corner of your Zoom window.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, beautiful. Thank you very much. Okay, well, this is a quasi-judicial hearing this evening, so I will just go through the procedure that the city council needs to follow, which starts with disclosure of ex parte contacts. I'll then make a brief presentation walking you through the landmark designation application. The applicant, which tonight is historic Boulder, and Sherry Bells will make a short presentation, followed by the owner presentation, and that will be given by John Kirkland, the owner of 891 12th Street. The public hearing is open at that point for public comment, and the owner and applicant have an opportunity to respond at that point. The public hearing is closed. City council discusses, and a motion requires an affirmative vote of at least five city council members to pass the motion. So I guess probably the first step would be for the city council to disclose any ex parte contacts they may have had about this case.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have the ex parte communications? Raise your hand if you do. Seeing none, James, you can move on.
Okay, thank you. Well, city council's decision this evening really consists of one of the three options on the screen, which is to approve the designation by ordinance, to modify and approve the ordinance, the designation by ordinance, or to disapprove the designation. Sorry, I'm in the wrong way here. And the basis for consideration of a landmark application is 911-1 and 911-2 of the Boulder Revised Code, which is really the intent and purpose of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which really states that in order for a property to be eligible for designation, it needs to meet the criteria for individual landmark designation and to conform with the purposes and standards of the ordinance in balance with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And in a nutshell, the purpose is to protect, enhance, and perpetuate buildings, sites, and areas reminiscent of past areas to enhance property values, to stabilize neighborhoods, to promote tourist trade, and interest, and foster knowledge of the city's living heritage. And of course, implicit in this is balancing private property rights with the public value that comes with landmark designation. So on the screen, you see the location of the property at 891 12th Street, known currently as the Marpa House. And it is located on University Hill on 12th Street, the northwest corner of Aurora and 12th. And it is actually in what has been identified as a potential historic district. So that is the University Hill Historic District, which is a large, a large area. And on the screen, you see sort of a pink rectangle, which shows the 14th Street, the University Place Historic District, which was designated in 2005. So that's fairly close to this property. So I'll just walk you through very briefly the timeline from the beginning of the landmark designation process, which began in July of 2019, just about a year ago. And an application was submitted by historic Boulder, not by the property owner, who at that time was the shambala. And prior to that application, there was at the Landmarks Board meeting about 40 people attending, and they all spoke in support of preservation of the Marpa House, or certainly the majority of them did. And then in August of 2019, the Landmarks Board passed a resolution initiating landmark designation, which is a step that's required if the application doesn't come from the property owner. And at that time, they did find that it was potentially eligible for individual landmark designation. So there's a lag in the code that requires a certain amount of time before, from the time that it's initiated to the time it's heard by the Landmarks Board, which occurred on December 4th of 2019. And they reviewed the landmark application and forwarded it to the city council with a recommendation to designate. And of the four Landmarks Board members in attendance that night all did vote in the affirmative to forward it to the city council. So, in February of this year, a landmark alteration certificate was submitted by the property owner, and we had actually suggested that this might be a good idea to get an idea of what they might be able to do if the building was landmarked. And once there is an application in the process with the city for landmark designation, there is the ability to go through the design review process. So that commenced, and there were two Design Review Committee meetings, quite long meetings to look at the proposal on February 19th and March 4th of this year. And through that design review process, which is an iterative And through that design review process, which is an iterative collaborative process, but looks at the, um, exterior changes to a property in the context of, uh, you know, the historic preservation standards that we have in our design guidelines, but also in terms of the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. So that actually went, um, fairly well and it, it turned out that the exterior changes were fairly minor. And on April twenty-first, um, just a couple of weeks ago, a landmark alteration certificate was issued for the project. So we'll talk a little bit about the historic significance. The building was constructed in nineteen twenty-three for forty thousand dollars after designs by William and Arthur Fisher. The Fishers are, uh, well-known architects in Colorado. They started in Canada and, uh, uh, they practiced individually and then came together in the nineteen twenties and designed a number of, of houses, uh, large houses in Denver and, uh, public buildings around the state. The Midland Savings Bank in, um, in, uh, Denver is an example, it was built in nineteen twenty-six. The Railway Exchange Building, which you may all know now in Denver, downtown Denver is the Hotel Monaco, which is a kind of an art deco building, was designed by them. But for this, uh, project, they worked in Tuscan revival, um, style and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But I, that, the, uh, impetus for designing this and the, the, um, property owners was the Sigma Alpha Epsilon, um, fraternity. And they were, um, at the time, they had been on the campus, uh, since eighteen ninety-six and they were looking for a permanent location. So they commissioned this, this building, which they were very proud of. And, um, it is recognized as being very important to the development of the community and establishing fraternity and sorority, uh, a fraternity, um, organization on the hill. But it was part of a movement, um, in the teens and twenties where a lot of these, um, sorority and fraternity organizations were establishing and building, uh, really quite grand houses on University Hill. So, and then finally in terms of historic significance, it was surveyed in nineteen ninety-one by Front Range Research Associates, who, um, did note that some changes had been made to the building in nineteen fifty-six. And I'll talk a little bit about the addition to the building. At that time in nineteen ninety-one, they thought that that addition may have somehow altered the historic character of the building. It was also re-surveyed in two thousand and one, um, when University Hill was re-surveyed by, um, Laura Ramsey and Catherine Barth. In terms of architectural significance, um, the house is recognized as a Mediterranean revival or Tuscan vernacular house, um, or, or building, that was inspired by the work of Charles Clouder, who was building, designing and building, uh, a number of buildings on the campus as the, the campus of the university grew. And in nineteen nineteen, he coined the term the University of Colorado style, which we still see today. The campus is still building their new buildings, with this vernacular, um, vocabulary, using tiled roofs, um, sandstone, earth toned colors, um, rounded arches. And it's a very handsome building and you can see, uh, in the photograph on the bottom from twenty nineteen, it is, it's, it really does evoke that sort of Northern Italian aesthetic. Now, uh, as I mentioned, Fisher and Fisher designed the main, uh, body of the building. But in nineteen fifty-six, Victor Langkardt was, um, commissioned by the fraternity to build the addition that you see on the, uh, top left on the screen. And it's the, the portion of the building to the, to the left, um, which was, um, really quite sympathetic to the overall building, but was a large addition to the building to provide more space for the growing fraternity, which was a result of course of the growing university, um, after World War Two. And then finally, in terms of the materiality, indigenous qualities, uh, the use of locally quarried sandstone is all over the building and it's really quite handsomely executed. So finally, um, we assess whether or not there is environmental significance and, um, staff and the landmarks both, the board both, uh, did consider that the site characteristics, the landscaping and including the use of sandstone retaining walls exhibit a high quality of plant and natural vegetation and that that was an element of environmental significance as well, um, the compatibility and the way it is designed in the context, uh, and setting stylistically relating to the nearby university. And then geographically, this building is really a familiar visual landmark on University Hill. And, and I think most people in Boulder do know it, even though, um, or they've driven by it and they kind of say, well, what's that building? It certainly is, uh, it is something that catches the eye. And, uh, finally, in terms of area integrity, as I mentioned before, it is located in the potential University Hill Historic District. So in, um, uh, my introduction, I mentioned the fact that the, uh, John Kirkland and his team submitted an application for a landmark alteration certificate. And the drawings on the screen indicate the, the changes that are being proposed to the building. They, for the most part, um, uh, talk about and propose the rehabilitation of the historic windows. There are a number of the windows, uh, windows on the building that have, um, been changed over time. And the, the, uh, the plan is for those building, for those windows, I should say, to put new windows in that match very closely to whether they were part of the nineteen twenty-three or the nineteen fifty-six portion of the building and by the green being the historic windows, um, and, uh, the yellow windows, uh, being from the other, uh, from the, from the later portion, uh, of the building or the later period of the building, I should say. And a lot of the work was inspired by historic photographs, of which there are actually some really fine, um, pictures. And again, I think that owes just to the, uh, sort of visual significance that this building has, not just on the hill, but in the city as a whole. And you can see the photograph at the bottom, the black and white photograph from the nineteen fifties shortly after the addition was built. And that actually did guide the change to what is an entrance facing onto, um, the street. And, uh, the proposal is to close that, um, and bring it back to the way it was historically in this photograph. And as well, it is shown on the architectural rendering, as well, uh, removal of the fire escape on the back, some reconfiguration of, of parking, um, but pretty minor changes. Now, I will say perhaps the biggest, uh, alterations to the building would be the addition of some light wells around the building to provide egress, um, from the, uh, basement bedrooms that the, uh, uh, that the property owner is, is proposing to, um, to build in there. So, again, these are, um, this was a very useful process and very productive, I think. And we, we really found, um, through this iterative process that there, there was a, a path forward to having a landmark building and a building that can, um, be actively used into the future. So, um, on the screen is the proposed landmark boundary, which is the green, um, hatched, line that you see around delineating the, the actual, uh, extent of the property. And you can see that it is a, a fairly large, uh, building on a, on a fairly large property. This would be consistent, excuse me, with the city's guidelines in terms of designating landmarks. That is, that it's better to go with a whole property than it would be to say, uh, bisect a property, that, that would be the first choice. And then the second recommendation here is that the, uh, staff recommends the property be known as the S A E Z B T Marpa House, recognizing the three organizations historically associated with the property. So the S A E stands, um, for the Sigma Alpha Epsilon. Uh, the Z, the Z B T is for the Zeta Beta Tau, which was a Jewish fraternity that owned the building through the sixties until the mid nineteen seventies, when they sold it to Vaj Radhatu, which, um, evolved into the Shambala. So that, that was the Buddhist organization that, um, started in Europa University and, um, owes to the, uh, the widespread popularity of Buddhism in, um, not only Boulder, but I think in the United States, it was one of the pioneering organizations in terms of that. So those are the recommended boundaries and landmark names. Staff does recommend, um, that the city council adopt ordinance eighty-three eighty-five, designating the property at eight ninety-one twelfth street to be known as the S A E Z B T Marpa House as an individual landmark under the city of Boulder's Historic Preservation Ordinance. And I should mention that, um, and you will hear from John Kirkland, the property owner, but, uh, the, the ownership team does now, um, support the landmark designation and we're very, very pleased, um, that that's the case. So with that, I will conclude and if you have any questions for me, I'm here. Thank you, James. And so council members, this is a chance to ask James questions before we move on to the applicant, uh, presentation. I see a handout from Aaron.
James, thanks very much for that presentation. Question for you, so with landmarks, so on some properties around town, I see plaques that describe the historic characteristics of a landmark. Would that, would we expect a plaque here or, I'm just curious, what's, what's generally the criteria for doing that? And then would we see one here?
Yeah, so all, all landmarks, all two hundred that we have now, um, either have or will have plaques. And it, the, the plaques are, are solid brass plaques, they're, they're pretty hefty things. And on them is, uh, just a very short description of the significance of the building. So it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's kind of an honorific, um, thing to have the plaque on a building. One of the benefits of landmarking.
Definitely. And it, how is the, kind of, who determines what text to put on this? Is that like the part of your department that decides that?
Right, well, um, we as staff do that, um, Marcy Cameron, uh, myself and, um, we work on the language and, uh, typically we share it with the property owner too, just to make sure that they're comfortable with it as well and then we pass it by the landmarks board as well.
Great, that was all I had, thank you.
Thank you. And then I have Mark and Rachel, Mark?
Yeah, when was the exterior changed? I assume that's a stucco application that, that gives it the white appearance?
Well, the, um, the main body of the house, of the, of the building, uh, the nineteen twenty-three portion always had stucco on the upper two stories.
Okay.
And then in nineteen fifty-six, um, Langkardt did really the same kind of sandstone, buff sandstone base with, with the stucco walls as well. The windows different, you, and you can really see the evolution in terms of window technology, but also sort of stylistically, they're a bit different as well.
And did that have any impact on your deliberations in terms of its, uh, historic quality?
Uh, in terms of the stucco?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, because the stucco is original. Both to nineteen twenty-three and nineteen fifty-six.
Thank you.
And then Rachel?
First, a process question, is this a first hearing and we could ask staff for information and then have it in time for a second hearing?
Well, no, actually you did have a first hearing and, uh, first meeting, I should say. And, um, I should have put that on the chronology, but that, that took place a couple of months ago.
Okay. And then we paused it. So there, well, is there no time for me to ask questions and then have staff report back with answers at another, at another meeting or is this it?
You can do that, but we probably didn't have a vote tonight, so.
We are. Okay, well, I'll ask my questions anyways, um, and I did talk with some staff beforehand, so perhaps they're ready to answer them tonight. Um, I feel like we have been given, um, sort of the historical positives on Marpa House and I think that there are possibly some historical negatives and I'm wondering how that, um, factors in and if we have any more details. So, as an example, we received emails about sexual assaults that occurred at this address. I think we even got a request to tear down Marpa House rather than preserve it. So given the history attendant to Shambala, um, and coupled with the fact that fraternity houses generally serve as sort of traditionally exclusive, um, privileged places and a statistically significant number of sexual assaults that are on campus or near campus occur in fraternity houses. I'm hoping to get some background that we could consider on any, um, crimes or significant negative history that may have occurred at this address. Um, and then also just in general, I know that we have landmarked fraternity houses before, so I'm hoping to get some general guidance and context for landmarking buildings that may serve as places that trigger trauma for community members.
Sure, yeah, I, I mean, that's, it's a really good question. And, um, certainly in terms of the, the, the recent, um, events that, that have come out in the news and, and, um, you know, there's, there's been litigation as well relating to activities that occurred during the Shambala's ownership of, you know, of the building. There, I, I think that's, that's still sort of unraveling right now and certainly something that, that staff has taken into consideration. And, you know, it's no question, it's, it's a very sensitive, um, sensitive issue. In terms of whether or not that might somehow, um, negate its historic significance, I, I'm, I'm not really sure. I, I don't think it necessarily would, because I think in terms of a, a building's life, it's a continuum and good things happen and bad things may happen as well. So, um, and as I, as I say, I think this is, is still sort of, um, playing out some of the, some of the recent past events. In terms of the fraternity, uh, houses and sorority houses and, you know, potential events that happened during those periods, I'm not aware of, uh, events that, that may have happened, um, you know, under either Sigma Alpha Epsilon or Zeta Beta Tau's ownership. But we would certainly, you know, make note of it if we did, you know, find something out.
And, and process wise, it, it sounds like there's no chance to get that information before voting?
Well, I think you could probably, um, uh, you know, if you felt, if the city council felt it was appropriate, you could push it to a third hearing. I, I'm not sure I might defer to, uh, to Tom on that one.
Thank you.
And yes, you could. I think it would be a will of council, Rachel. So when the time comes to discuss whether or not we, we will vote, uh, you can make a pitch to continue the hearing. One thing, one option is continuation, we've done that in the past, so you could continue second reading if you convince council to do so. Another would be to have a third hearing and, um, and have a discussion there. So Tom, would we generally have a third reading of this or would this just pass tonight? If, if we were to pass it?
The, the only reason you need a third reading is if you amended it. I don't see any basis to amend it. You could, as you suggest, continue second reading if you wanted to answer Rachel's question before voting.
So those would be the options we can discuss, Rachel.
And I just, I, 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 I think I agree generally with James that the one thing, I think you could, or you could use that as a criteria. That you're, if there was something that, that limited the value of the building because of history, uh, I think that, that, that would fit into one of the criteria under nine eleven two, nine eleven two A one. So I'm not sure if James was absolutely clear and I'm always reluctant to disagree with James on anything to do with landmarking, but I think that, that, um, this is a, this is quasi judicial, it has to be criteria based. James talked about the criteria. James talked about the criteria. In my view, whether it has aesthetic interest, value, a special character, historical architecture, or aesthetic interest would be undermined if you felt that the building's history was such that it wouldn't have those values. And your comment, Rachel, that it should be, people think it should be torn down rather than preserved, is something you could consider. I'm not suggesting you do it. I'm just saying it's, I believe it's available for you.
And just from time on planning board and lots of quasi judicial hearings, generally, it's an unbalanced decision that each council member makes. So you look at the different criteria and you say, on balance, does it meet the criteria? On balance, does it not? So different council members weigh different criteria more or less heavily. So that would be something that when you do speak to your thoughts, one way or the other, you probably want to address the criteria and which ones the history raises for you. Mary has her hand up?
I was just about to lower it, so never mind.
Okay. Anything else before we move on to the applicant presentation? Rachel, is that good? Okay, James, I think we're ready for the applicant.
Okay, I'm going to turn this now over to Sherri Bells, who's representing Historic Boulder. And I don't believe she has a PowerPoint presentation. Following Sherri's presentation, then John Kirkland, as property owner, will have about ten minutes to present. And he does have a PowerPoint. So turn it over to Sherri. Are you there, Sherri?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know how to get, if you want me on video, but.
If you can, that would be great.
There I am. Good evening. On behalf of Historic Boulder's Board of Directors, I send an email this morning to you in support of landmark designation of eight ninety-one twelfth street. I won't reiterate the letter as hopefully you've all read it. We thank the preservation staff for taking a lot of our research and incorporating it into their packet and presentation tonight. And we thank city council for considering this designation. It has been forty-eight years since Historic Boulder came into being and saved its first building. We have continued our mission over all these years of advocacy, education, rehabilitation, and celebration of preservation in this town. And we get to the, tonight's hearing for the landmarking of eight ninety-one twelfth street. The community joined together with Historic Boulder to advocate for the landmarking of this building. Through our research on it, we educated the public on both its architectural and social significance. Also, the owner has come to learn a lot about the process and the building. And he was initially against landmarking and has changed his stance and now supports it. He has committed to rehabilitate the structure in accordance with preservation guidelines. And we celebrate that. Tonight, hopefully, we also celebrate the conclusion of the process with this hearing. And we urge you to vote for the individual landmark designation of eight ninety-one twelfth street to be known as S A E Z B T Marpa House. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Does anyone have any questions for Sherri? No hands, so perhaps we're ready to move on to the property owner.
Okay, yes, it is now time for John Kirkland's presentation. And John, are you there?
Yes, I am, James, this is John Kirkland.
Okay, John, we're going to put your PowerPoint slides on the screen. So just let us know when you'd like us to, you know, to advance the slide.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for inviting me tonight to go over the eight ninety-one twelfth street landmarking. I know I sent a letter in last week to city council, kind of just pointing out some of the things I think that could be improved in the landmarking process, just from my perspective as a property owner and a developer here and a long-term resident here in Boulder. I think it could be improved along those lines. So as you see, those are, they're up on the screen right now in front of you as a rendering of the property. Very minimal changes to the outside. In fact, we did everything we could to bring it back to the historical glory of when it was built in nineteen twenty-three and the addition of nineteen fifty-six. As I've shared with Sherri Bells and other members of Historic Boulder, I've done other properties on the University Hill, all of them built between eighteen ninety-eight and nineteen oh four. And without any guidance from Historic Boulder or the landmarks, I built them back to as best I could. Based on property records I pulled out of the Carnegie Library, and I built all the exteriors of those buildings back to the earliest known Carnegie Library photographs and then built the interiors up to the most current international building code compliance from there. So go ahead, next slide, please. And not that much, it should say support, there you go, yes. As my letter stated, I'm in agreement with this designation at this point. I want to give my kudos to James Hewitt, Marcy Cameron. We had very productive meetings with them. They're very responsive. I think the city of Boulder is very lucky to have both of these individuals on staff, both in terms of education, their knowledge, their history of Boulder, their gems to work with. They're very responsive to things that we needed to have done, and they're pragmatic. And I just wanted, again, to reiterate what I said in the letter to them. I appreciate what they were able to do and work with us on the property. Next slide, please. One thing I want to really emphasize tonight is our interest, when I went about purchasing the property last summer, is I was, my interests were aligned with the historical process in terms of building a building back to, on a historical level of how a property should look. It was never my intention to demolish a building, to radically alter it, to change the exterior. If anything, as my past projects have shown, I've developed a number of properties here in Boulder, and I've always gone back to building the exteriors of these buildings back to how they looked and make them fit within the confines of the neighborhood. And it was compatibility. It was always my intent to do this with eight ninety-one twelve. I never had any thing deviated from that. I always tried to do the right thing in this regard. And this would be the fifth time that I've worked with, I profraternities in the past. I got rid of the fraternity element to Rachel's point. And I moved more into smaller living quarters, smaller apartments that more fit in the compatibility and the zoning of the property. I never, it was never my intent to use these as fraternities. I've always gone in the opposite direction and downsized both a property from an intensity and a use standpoint. The next slide, please. And then go ahead and hit the first button to thank you. So this process started back on July eighth. And it started at the time because I had the property under contract to purchase it. And just to be clear, the property owner at the time was not the Shambala Group. The group that owned it was Front Range Shambala. And I'm going to go into some detail on that in terms of how that came about. But what I was, I'm concerned about in the landmarking development, landmarking process is this. I submitted a pre-app. And for those of you that don't know, the pre-application process, it's an informational process only. It's non-binding on the applicant. You generally submit it by yourself or your architect. My architect submitted it for me. And that was on July eighth. On July tenth, we had a sitting city council member reach out. We discovered all this through Core Reports, over two thousand pages of Core Reports. I went through and read every single one of them. And there was a very concentrated effort from both sitting council members, former city council members, some staff members involved that shouldn't have been, to try to push this or to start the landmarking process on this property. They had had over forty years to do it from the time when Front Range Shambala purchased it, and they elected not to. When they heard about a transfer of ownership, even though I had no intention of demolishing the building, changing the exterior of the building, this landmarking process was started. And it was started without the consent of the seller, who was Front Range Shambala, or myself. So as a developer of multifamily projects here in Boulder and other places, as the City of Boulder has pointed out, the development process is inefficient here. It's full of unknown going into projects, makes projects cost more because of that, makes housing costs in the City of Boulder go up, all of which goes against the City of Boulder's affordability goal and in direct conflict of the Boulder Valley Con Plan. And so I want to bring it to your attention tonight, just kind of some of the processes and the challenges I went through from some people that were trying to, you know, stop the sale of this property. So pre-app went in on July eighth. July tenth, a city council member reached out to other people in the community and said, hey, this property is not landmarked, this would be a good way to stop the sale. Soon after that, another city council member through Core Reports also discovered, but was working with a broker to try and buy it for Boulder Housing Partners, if I should not end up buying it. You know, terrible use of public resources, and I don't think that's how government should be set up. Again, there was a willing seller and a willing buyer. And I think it's important to understand of who actually the willing seller was in the process. I saw Sherri Bells's letter there regarding Historic Boulder. And I want to read parts of the letter that actually there's John Cobb. He was a Shambala interim board member, as to Rachel's friend's comment. There were nine board members on Shambala, they all stepped down when the sexual allegations came out. And then there was only, then five members came into play. And only two of those members, John Cobb and another individual, had, they were the only ones who had the capacity to sell the property, and they were in control of the property. And they used, those were the property, those are the people I dealt with during the entire process. I'm going to read a couple paragraphs from a letter that John Cobb wrote to the City of Boulder's Landmarks Board on August seventh in his state. Dear Landmarks Board, I'm writing this letter on behalf of Front Range Shambala, the owner of the property located eight ninety-one twelfth street, oftentimes referred to as the Marpa House. It is my understanding that Historic Boulder recently submitted an application to designate the Marpa House as an individual historic landmark. The Shambala organization does not support this unsolicited effort to landmark the property. And during our forty years of ownership, never treated the Marpa House as historic. He concludes at the end of his letter, "Based on the above, we have never considered the Marpa House a historic building. The Shambala organization never sought to designate the Marpa House as a historic landmark during the time I owned the property, nor would Shambala support or endorse any unsolicited third-party effort to make it such in the future." That's the summary. I was obviously the buyer of the property. My opposition to it was very well-known. The next part of the slide, please.
Mr. Kirkland, I'm going to interrupt for a second and ask you, what of this has a bearing on the actual application for working? Because the hearing we're having tonight is about landmarking on this. Your points about the process, I'd be happy to have this emailed to council. But if you could, things that have a bearing on whether or not we should landmark it, that would be most appreciated.
Okay, let's just skip through, go ahead and slip through the slides there, okay? It's on the bearing of the landmark, Sam. Go ahead and flip to the next slide. Okay, there you go. In terms of the bearing of the landmarks, I'm in agreement with it as we've gone through the process. But I just want to be cautionate as that landmarks can be used as a weapon to stop a sale or to stop a property from being a, from a buyer and seller. And I would just encourage council to maybe look at how the process is put in place and provide an off-ramp in the future. So you don't have the situation that I ran into on this property. In short, I'm in support of the, I'm in support of the landmarks designation on this property, as I stated in my letter last week.
Okay, very good. Anything else you'd like to add as far as the landmarking itself or the qualification of the property to be landmarked?
No, sir.
Very good, thank you for that presentation. Council members, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kirkland? Okay, none, I guess James will turn it back to you to go through the next steps. Is it a public hearing next?
Yes, this is, this is the opportunity for a public hearing.
Great. And if you wouldn't mind, maybe if you can take the presentation down for a moment so that people can see everyone who might speak. Let's see. Do we have people, Sarah? Do we have a list of people who are signed up for public hearing?
We do, we have nine. We had originally ten individuals, but as you indicated previously, Mark Galpin withdrew for this evening. So we have nine individuals. Would you like me to call them in the order in which they're listed?
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, first up is Lynn Segal. Right after Lynn will be Stephen Vandermerch. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute Lynn. Lynn, you should be able to speak now.
I have a lot of, I'm fired up. My brother lived in this place for nine years. First of all, as to the attributions of the actual space, that big boxy front part, that big ugly part that was added on, that is really, it's a nice accommodation to the building because it really adds some significant square footage. And the whole beauty of it, and what you need to do is disallow the landmark alteration certificate because that, along twelfth street where you enter in, and they want to close that off. They want to close it off from the neighborhood. What they want to do is they want to turn this into a fraternity again. And that's why the landmarking is not bad, because they'll keep it as a fraternity. And the neighborhood is not going to like that. And fraternity, one of the, one of the reasons it became Marpa House instead of a fraternity was fight against the Vietnam War and outrage about that. And fraternities weren't big then. The whole beauty of this place is that there's a back barbecue place in between kind of the two things in the, in the south face of the place. That's really nice. But there's also the front entrance on twelfth street, which enjoins the neighborhood, which they want to close up. So they'll turn it into a fraternity, and they'll have their big parties in the back, and then it will spread out into the streets, and the neighborhood's going to freak. Now, what Kirkland said, and he lied, is they were going to have sixteen units, three bedrooms each. You cannot turn a space like that. They were going to scrape it, they were going to completely redo it. That is completely not true of Kirkland. And my proposal for this place is there's forty people there for forty years, Marpa House. It's a model community living space in Boulder. It should be up at Alpine Balsam where the hospital is. That should be, that's why it should be historically characterized. Now, what really happened here is that John Cobb needed to sell out. This was a hostile acquisition. It was liquidated, basically, because of the, or however you say his name, the Shambala community that has a dark side to it in the Buddhist community, which is very, you know, strong in Boulder. And I think it can be turned into the good. I think what you need to do is what, like Sam said, there needs to be an amendment that this can never be a fraternity, because that's what they want to turn it into. And Better Boulder would love this, you know? And I'm not on Better Boulder's side for most things. But you need to amend it and make this model of Martha housing.
Thank you, Lynn, thank you.
No frat, no frat.
Let's go ahead and move on to the next speaker.
Okay, the next speaker is Stephen Vandermerch, and after that will be Jay Madsen.
And Sarah, thank you. And if you can flag for us if there are people pulling time, I know that was something you asked me to.
They're going to let me know as we pull them up to speak. And then we'll confirm that other people are on the phone and willing to cede their time.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, council members, thank you for your time. Kirkland's original vision for the building in the pre-app he mentioned in his presentation included adding a second floor to parts of the building, as well as other major changes that would have obliterated the historical importance of the building. He made changes to the landscaping during the landmark process, action that was stalled only by the intervention of the. action that was stalled only by the intervention of the tentative neighbors. The landmark code has been absolutely critical to preventing destructive development of an important historical landmark for our community. Kirkland lied extensively to Marpa House residents in his effort to collect information on the property and their bid prior to his outbidding them. This was documented in a long daily camera article quoting emails and voicemails. And Marpa residents told me personally about how he lied to them. Kirkland has had another negative daily camera article written about his development practices where he delivered a building to student renters long after the semester had started. Kirkland has served contempt of court jail time here in Boulder and ordered by and was ordered by the court to pay a large sum of money. I will add that with the exception of this letter surrendering to landmarking, Kirkland has aggressively fought the neighborhood every step of the way, making threats and singling out individual neighbors to attack and intimidate. Kirkland represents out of state investors building housing for out of state students. Neither of these constituencies care about this community. And it's exactly this kind of predatory development that Kirkland has a track record of doing. And it's that kind of development that Boulder needs to protect against. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vandermerch.
Okay, next up is Jay Madsen and after Jay will be Daniel Harburger. Jay, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Mr. Madsen, you are still muted. You can unmute yourself at the lower left of the screen, there's a microphone button. You can also, if you go to your name on the screen, in the upper right of your name, there's an unmute button there as well.
I manually unmuted him, Jay. I mean, sorry, Sam. Jay Madsen, if you're on, you may speak.
Mr. Madsen, it could be that your microphone is having an issue with your computer, we cannot hear you. Sarah, maybe we move on to the next speakers and come back to Mr. Madsen.
Sure, be happy to do that. Hey, our next speaker is Daniel Harburger.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hey, I'm I'm pooling with Hillary Griffith and Alexia Parks, who are both on this call.
I just need to quickly confirm with them that they're willing to cede their speaking time to you. So bear with me for one moment, please.
No problem, thanks.
Ms. Griffith, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, are you willing to cede your time to Mr. Harburger?
I am, I, we're three generations, he's representing all of us.
Okay, great, thank you. And Ms. Parks, are you willing to cede your time to Mr. Harburger? I need to, I'm trying to unmute you so we can hear.
I'm willing to concede, I'm the other part of the third generation.
Okay, terrific. So Chris, it seems like you already adjusted the clock, thank you very much for that. Mr. Harburger, you may begin.
Okay, so I'm back, you guys can hear me, right?
We can.
Fantastic, all right. Before I start, I just wanted to quickly address Rachel's concern about the activities at Shambala and past fraternities in the building. I think it's worth noting that John Kirkland is currently renting the property to a fraternity. So while this is consistent with the past historic use of the building, it feels disingenuous for the owner to suggest that he's concerned about past misconduct while simultaneously being happy to rent it to a fraternity today that has its own mixed reputation when it comes to sexual misconduct. So that that's just, that's one small thing. But as for the meat and potatoes, I know a lot of our neighbors have had difficulty making the tech work to get here. So I'm going to do my best to try to represent those who couldn't make it. I'm 28 years old, as my mom and my grandmother have both attested to. I'm a third generation Boulderite and a homeowner in the Lower Chautauqua neighborhood. In my mind, there are, whoops, sorry about that, techno tech difficulties. In my mind, there are two questions here. One is, does the property qualify as a landmark? And two is, should we landmark this property? I believe the answer to both is yes. For the question, should we landmark the property? Here's what I have to say. Boulder has changed so much since I was a kid. There have been new developments past Iris, major changes on Pearl Street and many more examples. And while I generally support new development and new changes, I mean, my mom was actually a member of the University Hill Development Board. I also recognize that there are plenty of opportunities for new structures, but far fewer to protect the gems of our past. The Marpa House is one of those gems and I feel it's really important that we protect it with landmark status. As for the question, does it qualify? The Boulder Landmarks Board has three times unanimously voted that the property does qualify for state for landmark status. And to that end, I've put together a small compilation of their concluding remarks from the last two meetings. I'm going to play that for you now.
This is an excellent example.
All right.
For all of you who are here, I think this is an excellent example of grassroots advocacy. And I don't think communities thrive unless there is, the community speaks up and the community is galvanized around issues like this. We are very fortunate, this community, that we can landmark over the owner's objection. We have some real treasures that would have been lost if we hadn't. And I today am very inclined or wholeheartedly will support staff's recommendation to initiate this property.
It satisfies the criteria probably better than any other project that I've seen since I've been on the board. This is something we probably should have looked at or should have been landmarked when I was appointed.
I think staff has made a very good case that the building should be landmarked. To me, it hits on all the points.
And I do think that staff's evaluation resonates and that all of the criteria are met for this particular building. So I'm in support of landmarking it.
This has been one of the most heavily participated issues that's come before us while I've been on the board. We had this brought to us by a kind of ground swell of of citizenry. We have to judge this based on the landmark code. And I'm in favor of sending this one to council. All in favor?
I.
I, um, the motion carries.
So that was just a summary of the last two meetings. In conclusion, the property owner supports landmarking, the community supports landmarking, and the landmark board has supported landmarking during each of its meetings. I hope that you guys will as well. Thanks very much.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Daniel, the next person on the list is Greg Harburger. I don't see a Greg Harburger in this meeting. Can you clarify whether that's somebody you're know of and?
Never heard about him in my life. That's very strange, two Harburgers? No, I'm kidding, I, that's my dad, but I think we've had enough Harburger Griffith Parks representation here.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll move on to the next individual, I appreciate it. Okay, the next individual up is going to be Laura DeLuca. And then we'll finally wrap up with Sue Ellen Harrison. And Laura, I don't actually see Laura on the call. There was briefly a phone number on the call, but it's no longer on the call. So I think we'll move on to Sue Ellen Harrison. Sue Ellen, you should be able to speak now. You may have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Oh. Bear with me, you just got muted. Can you reset the clock, please, Chris? Sue Ellen, you should be able to speak. We re, re, reset the clock and I apologize for accidentally muting you.
That's okay. We're all dealing with this craziness. I'm Sue Ellen Harrison, I live at 840 12th Street. I've lived there for 43 years. And so I have been a neighbor of the Marpa House for for a very long time. There are a couple of things I want to, would like to respond to. One, you know, obviously this building meets the criteria and I think clearly should be landmarked. But one thing that's unusual about this building is the amount of support throughout the city. And it's not just from the neighborhood, but it's throughout the entire city. And I think that's important when, you know, I was struck by Rachel France, you know, comments in terms of what do you do now about these sexual allegation issues? And it just seems to me when you, yes, you're going to have to look at what the, you know, what the balance is, the balance can be. But you have this unusual amount of support in the community. The landmarks board actually addressed this issue. And they stated, okay, the sexual allegations are out there, but this building has a long history. Might be some good, might be some bad. But it is not enough to not landmark this building. And you now have the owner developer who has, who's agreed to the landmarking. So I certainly hope that you will proceed tonight and approve the landmarking. I have one final comment that's a little odd. We do know that under your process, that this all will get approved and then the developer can submit for the special use review. And there's only three weeks under your procedures for staff and the community to respond to that proposal. And given what's going on with COVID and given how we're all trying to, you know, deal in this world, I would strongly urge council to extend that time period to be longer than three weeks. And I realize that's not really part of landmarking, but it's something that is going to be associated, you know, with landmarking. So please landmark this building, the community really cares, thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest, Sam, if possible, we try to give Mr. Madsen a chance again to speak if his microphone is now working. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, Mr. Madsen, and then there was someone else who was signed up who was not on the call. We might try them one more time as well.
Okay. Mr. Madsen, you are unmuted. I think that he's having technical difficulty, his microphone just went away altogether. We did have somebody call in and it's perhaps Mr. Madsen or it could be Ms. DeLuca. So I'm going to allow that person to speak and identify themselves.
And you might put the number out, you might just say it for Mr. Madsen as well.
It's.
Or maybe.
The phone number, you mean?
Yes, or if it's in their invite.
It should be included in the original invite, I don't have the call in number in front of me, I'm afraid.
All right, okay.
I'm going to allow the phone number 303-447-0380 to speak.
Yes, I'm here, this is Jay Madsen.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for all the technical difficulties. I am, my name's Jay Madsen, I live in Boulder. I like to read in the public domain my short letter I sent to every city council member. Dear city council, I have been a neighbor of the Marpa House for over 27 years. Boulder had the most integrated, friendly co-op housing situation for over 45 plus years and it is now gone. What the city council can now do is preserve a special historical building. The landmarks historical report on the Marpa House stated clearly the many historical individuals, events and community history which makes the Marpa House special. There is no other building quite like the Marpa House in Boulder and will serve Boulder well in preserving the structural integrity to surrounding exterior gardens which makes the Marpa House special. And I just want to add one thing about the sexual assault issues at the Marpa House. My wife has been going there as a practicing Buddhist for over 20 years. And in those 20 years, she's been there hundreds of times by herself and with guests and friends and never once was sexually harassed or intimidated in any way. She found the Marpa House, the Shambala people to be warm, welcoming to her. And it was a very, it's been, had been a very positive influence in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Sarah, any other, any other folks who are called in?
No, that concludes our public hearing tonight.
We have one more thing to mention and that's that John Decker, the landmarks board chair is attending the meeting. And if you have any questions for him during your discussion, which I think should happen now, he, he is, he's available.
Very good, thanks very much. If you want to pull the presentation down, it will be easier for other folks to get the full screen of participants. And I have Adam Switlick with a hand raised.
Yeah, I believe the owner applicant gets a response to the public testimony.
That is correct. James, did you want to do that now?
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry, I, I, yeah, absolutely. This is the opportunity for, for Mr. Kirkland to respond to anything that he feels he, he would like to. John, are you there?
Yes, yes, I am, James, thank you. I just want to say thanks and I appreciate everyone and their public comments. All I want to say is, this is exactly why, again, the letter I wrote to city council last week in terms of the process. You know, this whole thing was started, the landmarking process, and more fear mongering and more fault, more false assumptions than anything else. If anyone had just contacted me, they knew as of July 10th from the pre-app, they knew who I was. They had my contact information, it's clearly demonstrated in the core reports. I'm happy to sit down and talk with anybody and that's still my case today. I just want to make a few corrections on the thing. I'm not building a second floor on the property. Okay, what was said there, it's not true. I have no intention of putting a fraternity in there. You look my past projects, they're not, no, I would the opposite. I got rid of all those fraternities, it's my intention to do the same here. And thirdly, there's not a fraternity renting it right now. There's a few students in there on individual leases, that's it. So just want to clarify those comments. But otherwise, thank you for everyone's participation and I'm happy to speak to anyone anytime about it. But again, I'd like to thank staff and James and Marcy for all their work that they put in on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. James, is there anything else before we turn it over to council?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so if it's coming council, I think it's time for the council members comments on this to give their thoughts.
But if she knows that I'm not trying to get.
Yeah, I'm seeing no hands here.
So is this where we're just discussing or questions or anything?
So this is everything at this point, you can ask questions.
So first of all, I have an awkward question for Tom. Mr. Kirkland suggested that some council members were emailing within the last year in a way that may have shown interest in purchasing the property or promoting landmarking. And I just want to clarify, is that something that would require an ex parte disclosure? Or are there otherwise any concerns before we vote if that had happened? And I'm learning, so it may be that that's just commonplace and happens all the time, but it was concerning to me, so I wanted some clarification.
Not necessarily. If any, if, if any of the current council members did something like that, I would expect the disclosure. I suspect that those were former council members he was talking about. And I don't know that any additional disclosure is necessary. He was talking about things he received in response to a federal records act request. So he has the information. And so the whole purpose of ex parte disclosure is to provide the applicant or the owner with information so they can rebut it. He already has that information.
I do think that he said it was current council members as well. To the extent that that matters. And then, oh, I'll let Aaron go, now I have a, is this a colloquy?
Well, yeah, I just, I wanted to chime in here. I mean, I remember there was some chatter about the possibility of BHP purchasing the property. And I may have spoken to a council member about that, like I remember hearing about it, I don't. But I, it didn't affect whether the property should be landmarked or not. It was just about whether BHP might be interested in buying the property. So I, if that's, this needs to be disclosed, I guess here I go.
Okay, thank you.
So then, yeah, that was my question. My, I guess my discussion would be that at the retreat, I had asked that council receive in staff memos sort of pros and cons where we're getting recommendations. And I think this would be an example of the situation where, where I feel that we get a really thorough look at the pros and not a fully balanced review of the possible cons. And I did give staff a heads up last week that I would have questions about this property's history in terms of sexual allegations and possible trauma for community members that attaches to this property. I don't think we got a full picture or sort of an equal look at the cons as we did as, you know, here's what's great about a fraternity house and the Shambala Center. And I don't think we got sort of an equal deep dive into, again, the possible trauma that, that emanates from this property. And I don't have a good understanding of whether it's really appropriate or is our past practice to landmark a building that inflicted trauma on people. And I think some of the allegations are for children. And that includes in recent years and possibly historically if statistics hold true about sexual assaults in fraternity houses. So I would really like to get more information and a fully fleshed look at the cons before we vote on this because I think that's fair and we're not talking about a historical building that 100 years ago had some bad stuff happen, but it's possibly inflicting trauma on people today. And that's an awkward thing, I think, for us to landmark. And I would also want some more information on whether we've done it in the past, if there's a physical space that has that sort of history, do we landmark it in real time? So, so my request would be, would be that we do delay it and get more information and then come back whenever that's appropriate.
Great. I've got Mark and then Aaron still has his hand up. So Mark?
Yeah, Rachel has actually raised some, some very concerning issues to me. But in the end, my personal approach to this is to look at the, the historic significance of the building more than the people who have been in it or around it. And I think on the basis of historical significance, this would be clearly something that ought to be landmarked. And as troubled as I am by its bad history, I'm prepared to support it. I believe the community supports it very strongly. And I just think from a, an architectural perspective, it's a, it's a worthy building to be landmarked. And so I'm going to support it with, with the caveat that I'm rather disturbed with some of that history.
Adam?
Yeah, Mark's point brings up an interesting thought for me. It's just every single one of these landmarkings, we talk about the people involved and their impact on the building itself. And that seems to be, to some degree, one of the basis of criteria, or at least historical significance. So I don't necessarily think we should decouple the two. So I'm open to the idea of at least doing a little bit more research.
Okay, Aaron?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Adam, that's my understanding as well. I mean, the, the people involved with the buildings are always mentioned in landmarking processes. And so I think it is, it is an important part of it. I, I mean, I do feel like the, that the, the building from a cultural and historic perspective is a landmark building. And, and I think the way, Rachel, I really appreciate you raising in these points. But I think the, the way I would look at it is that the, the building is a significant one for our community that is worthy of preservation. The, I was asking about the plaque earlier in my questions because I was thinking about these issues and thinking, you know, can we, at least when we memorialize the, the building, can we get some acknowledgement about some of the, you know, the things that were not entirely positive that happened? And I think in particular, some of the sexual assault issues around, you know, the Shambala organization, which is of course why this building changed hands in the first place. That was the precipitating factor. So that would be the direction that I would go is, is to think about acknowledging the full past of the building. But I do support the landmarking tonight.
Okay, so I've got Mary with a hand raised and then Ginny with a hand raised. So Mary?
Yeah, I appreciate Rachel bringing this up. And it would be actually interesting to conduct this kind of exercise going back through all our landmark buildings if, if this was a direction we wanted to go in. And I agree with, with Aaron that the, the place to acknowledge this would be on the plaque somehow. Because I do think that our tendency, at least in this country, is to erase the bad history. And in, including some of this bad history in the plaque, I think would be a movement in the right direction. So I, I would go along with what Aaron recommended.
We've got Ginny and then Bob?
I just wanted to add that this is a very important discussion. And I hope that we can get past it tonight and move forward and have a more honest discussion about it. Because I remember I mentioned to Jane a couple of months ago, because with Aaron mentioning the plaque, I mentioned to Jane a couple of months ago, when we're doing landmarking, what can we do? Whether it's policy-wise or something beyond that, that really preserved the legacy of what happened, even though it was bad. So when I was listening to the discussion today, I, although I'm new to this community as well, and I was thinking, okay, what would be the decision that I would want to make? I am more open to landmarking, but I think Rachel brought up some very important point. What can we do to ensure, you know, that we, we don't just landmark and forget about the past of what happened? So whether it's, whether we're thinking of violence prevention against women, something that says, okay, we're landmarking this, but with it, here's what we're doing. So that's what I was thinking more, what can we do? So hopefully, whether we decide to landmark tonight, which I think most likely we will, is that we are gonna move this conversation beyond and say that, okay, when we're landmarking a property, whether it's, we've had properties where African Americans have lived. What can we do when it comes to those properties? Can we, whether it's the funding to provide more arts for minority communities or black communities or as well? So I think it's a greater conversation we can have moving forward.
Great, thank you, Ginny. Um, Bob?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with, with Mark and Aaron and Mary. First, I agree with Mark that it's the, it's the building that we're, we're protecting. And I'm not sure what we would learn in the next week or two, or however long we would pause, that would change our opinion about the, 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 the value of preserving this building. But I do also agree with Aaron's suggestion, as seconded by Mary, that a good way to capture and memorialize the, the part of the history of the building and the reason why the building came into other hands would be to put it on the plaque. So I think that would, that would be a good way to protect the building, but also acknowledge its history.
Great. And then I've got Adam next, and then I'm gonna jump in after Adam.
Sure, I just wanted to say that I, I like that idea as well. And I think that hits on the points that we're trying to make, to make sure that the historic preservation balances both sides of the issue.
Great, thanks for that. And I also want to thank Rachel for bringing this up. Because, you know, there are many buildings across the country that are landmarked that have really ugly histories to them. One that I grew up with in Knoxville, Tennessee, some of the landmark buildings were involved with the Civil War. And you had those people from Union armies and Confederate armies that were killed in those buildings. And that was acknowledged in the historical interpretation. Those are the home here. We have Settlers Park, which is the site of the original betrayal of the people who were here before settlers arrived. And we are working with the American Indian tribal groups who have connections to the Boulder Valley to rename that park and to change the interpretation around the history there. So I think it's important that we continue to evolve the way that we look at landmarks and that we include the full history of the people who have occupied the building. It is not the building's fault that people may have done bad things to other people in the building. It is also not the building's fault that some of the previous owners have done things onsite and mostly offsite, which were not, they were violent and cruel and reprehensible, the things that people have been accused of at the very least. So I think that's worth acknowledging. I think the plaque is a fine place to do it. I agree with Mary in that we are trying to look back and, and make things right that have not been right. And so it might be an interesting project to carry forward, having staff take a look back at, at currently landmarked buildings and seeing if there are other cases like this where there have been bad history associated with a building that's landmarked that we might want to make sure that we acknowledge, particularly if it had some kind of racial or ethnic component to any kind of discrimination or violence. So I think this is a great discussion. It's probably the most interesting discussion of the history around buildings in a landmark setting that I can remember. I will agree that I think we should go ahead and move forward with this and give staff instruction to, you know, staff's gonna hear our discussion, but give staff direction to really dig into what some of the history is. I don't know the fraternities back in the days when these were fraternities. I don't know if we're gonna be able to recreate any of the negative history there. But certainly, some of the more recent negative history associated with Shambala should be acknowledged, even though there were many, many good things, I think, about the student experiences and the young people who lived in this building. So it's a complicated subject. I appreciate Rachel broaching the subject and other people engaging with it. And I, I think we should at least make sure to include this direction in any vote that we have going forward. I've got Mark and then Bob, and then I see James has a hand raised. So Mark?
Yeah, I just want to key off one other thing that Rachel said, which I thought was important. As we go forward and in the future, I think it would be very useful if we got a more comprehensive view of a property from staff in their recommendations. Give us the good, give us the bad. And, you know, it gives us a better basis for making our decisions. Rachel asked for that, and I think that's a, a worthy change.
Hey, Bob and then James, hear it?
First, I was gonna make a motion, but I prefer, for someone to agree with, with Mark that it would, would be helpful in the future. If a building has, has some, a bad history, we should know about that as well so we can make a balanced decision. I'm gonna defer to James because he may have something to say, but I want to just make a motion whenever people are done with comments.
Okay, I'll come back to you right after James. James?
Yeah, thanks. Just, just very quickly, I mean, this, this is a really important issue. And, you know, we're certainly very sensitive to it. And I can make a commitment that we will work to have some sort of acknowledgement of the complicated history, especially of the recent past associated with that building. And I think we could also, we could also include that in the, in the documentation that we have. So that lives with the record as well and goes into the Carnegie Archive. And we have that as a, you know, memorializing these issues. I think one of the things that we thought was a little bit tricky about it was it was, it's still sort of playing out. So I think that was eight, 10 months ago. And, and now there certainly are some things that have been resolved. So just certainly do want to make a commitment to, you know, to the council that we will do that.
Great, and I'll just jump in and respond to that as well, that I, I think, you know, it's always good to have the whole history involved because there's the building and the architecture and the place. But I think, you know, that part of the work we do here when we're landmarking is we do a lot of research. And I think that that research, there's no reason to shy away from bad history. It's, it's history and it happened. And I, I think that we should know the good and the bad. You know, one of the recent landmarkings was that a building up on the hill that probably served as a place for people with tuberculosis to either recover or not. And so there's some bad history in places like that too of people who died. And so, you know, acknowledging that is not necessarily judgmental or non-judgmental. It is saying, here it is, and it's up to each individual to interpret, you know, what that means to them and how they should play that. So I am gonna go back to Bob and then Rachel's next.
Well, again, I was gonna make a motion, so I'll, I'll yield to Rachel if she has further comments.
Okay, thanks. So I, I think when we landmark, we do always get the history of who lived in the building and sort of why it was special due to the history of the site and the people who were attached to it. So again, due to fraternities being primarily wealthy and white and their origins and the statistically high number of sexual assaults that have occurred in those houses. And then the recent Shambala history, this building's not gonna meet landmarking criteria for me. And without any additional information, I'll be voting against it. But do you want to put in a plug for maybe picking a different name that recognizes the victims and the history instead of the people who lived there? If that's possible.
Bob?
A move that we adopt, I think it's ordinance 8385, designating the property at 891 12th Street to be known as the SAE ZBT Marpa House as an individual landmark under the City of Boulder's Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Second?
Second, does anyone want to speak to the motion here? There's not yet. Okay.
I, I'll just say something. First of all, I, I can't be any more eloquent about, about the reasons for this property to be landmarked than what the Landmarks Board itself already said. And I really appreciate the gentleman who played back to us excerpts of the tape. I think that was great to hear from the Landmark Board members themselves because they obviously lived this and they were quite eloquent in their observations. So I'm not gonna try to top that. I do want to thank several people, however. I want to thank Historic Boulder, of course, for bringing this landmark application forward. They've always been champion of historic preservation in Boulder since their founding, I think almost 50 years ago. They're almost, almost eligible to be landmarked themselves as an organization. So I want to thank, thank them for doing that. I want to thank the neighbors for their advocacy. As James mentioned, this is a property that is well-known in Boulder and particularly a landmark in the truest sense of the word for the people who live in that neighborhood. I want to thank the owner, Mr. Kirkland, for working with our staff and with the Landmarks Board, the Design Review Committee, to find a solution that was mutually acceptable to everyone. It would have been a very different hearing tonight and a very uncomfortable place for us to be to landmark this property over the objection of the owner. That's a very, very rare occurrence. And I really appreciate, Mr. Kirkland, you finding a way to make this work for yourself and for the neighbors and for the community. So I appreciate that very much. And then finally, I want to thank, as always, James and Marcy for doing a wonderful job as they, as we've grown accustomed to it, but we don't want to take that for granted. So James and Marcy, thank you so much for working through this project, bringing the parties together and creating our 201st landmark property in Boulder. So thank you to everybody.
Mark, do you want to speak?
No.
Okay.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Start with Councilmember Wallach.
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Gates?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Rocket?
Aye.
Friend?
No.
Joseph?
Aye.
Swetlik?
Yes.
The motion passes seven to one.
Hey, very good. Thank you all for the interesting discussion. James, anything else we need to do or is this settled?
No, I guess what I would suggest is that I follow up with the council. We follow up with the council with the added documentation, acknowledging, you know, some of the difficult aspects of the history and as well let you know about the plaque language.
I think that would be great. I think you... I think you're much appreciated. So thank you. We'll look forward to that follow-up when you have that done. Lynette?
Your next item is regarding hemp business licensing.
Kathy Haddock is here to make the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. I am Kathy Haddock from the city attorney's office and pleased to be with you tonight. We are bringing this item to task for an accommodation because of COVID that's happened with respect to the hemp ordinance. It's scheduled to come before you in June when the, we are working from home was when we were going to start the public outreach. When we drafted the ordinance per year, not of five, we're anticipating that the fees would cover the costs of an additional licensing program and that there would be additional staff. So all that has changed, but we'd like to continue with the ordinance. It contains many things that would facilitate our ability to be able to handle marijuana odor complaints from citizens and other things that are in the ordinance. So what I'd like to do is just get an idea from you if you're okay with staff's proposed accommodation before we do our public outreach so that we can, when we do the public outreach being saying what we think is in line with what council wants. So what we would propose is that we go ahead with the ordinance as it is, but that internally the licensing staff do a registration rather than a license process for the existing businesses so that we can know where they are, start getting them on the list. And when we have enforcement questions or complaints that we know who to go talk to, but we delay actually doing the licensing part of it until 2021. The scope of this is that we have, there's 55 hemp cultivation facilities and manufacturers that are going to be subject to these licenses. That's more than the marijuana cultivation and manufacturers that we have. So it's, it has an impact. But if we just do the registration and delay the licensing, we can do the enforcement things that are needed and we can, you know, do the community outreach that we want to do and reach the people that would be potentially impacted. And then all the existing businesses would be grandfathered in. We then propose that no new businesses would open, no new hemp businesses would open without a license and that we do a full licensing program as we know what our new normal is and after we get the new tobacco licensing off the ground. And again, it's coming to you potentially out of order because we're doing public outreach. Circumstances have changed and we want to make sure we're going in a direction consistent with what works for you. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sam, you're muted. Thank you, Tom. Does anyone have any questions for Kathy? Oh, sorry. Aaron, I see your hand now, then Mary and then Bob.
Kathy, thanks very much for that. And this generally sounds good, but my one question or concern is that it sounds like what you're proposing includes essentially a moratorium on any new hemp business in the city of Boulder for a year or so. Is there any reason why we couldn't allow new ones but register them as you're talking about registering the existing hemp businesses so that, you know, people, if they were interested, are still able to start a new hemp business in the next year?
Sure. I mean, we can do that from a staff's perspective. We're not recommending doing that because right now the marijuana businesses are limited in their location, that they can only have three marijuana businesses within 500 feet of each other. We assume you're going to want the same thing related to the cannabis businesses. And that's the way that, I'm sorry, the hemp businesses, cannabis includes both. And so the more businesses we keep putting in and grandfathering, the less chance there is that we're going to be meeting that criteria. We had understood that there was very few additional spaces left for such businesses. So that proposal is not because of a staffing issue, but to try to keep the status quo while we do the COVID recovery with respect to not having too many businesses growing cannabis or processing it within the same area.
Okay, thanks for that. When questions are done, I'll have a couple of comments. Appreciate it.
Great. I've got Mary and Bob now. Mary?
Thanks, Kathy, for bringing that forward. I had a question about the outreach. So you would, you said there's like 55 hemp businesses currently and they would...
Fifty-five businesses that we have just...
I'm sorry. You cut out the whole time, so I didn't get what you said, Kathy.
I'm sorry, and mine is making you cut out too. It's probably my connection. We have discovered about 55 from people who did put actually that they were a hemp business on their business license application. Several of them didn't, and they were only found when the fire department did inspections. So the reason why we also want to register is that 55 is the minimum. There may be more that we won't know about until this ordinance is adopted and they need to register.
Okay. And is there any, would there be outreach that would occur prior to the registration of the hemp businesses? And who were you thinking that the outreach needs to encompass in addition to the people that have hemp businesses?
Well, we would make it public. The outreach that we had planned before all this happened would be that we'd use the marijuana license list that we have, the list that we've created of hemp businesses that we'd work with the chamber, which we've already been doing somewhat, and about anybody else that they would suggest inviting. And, you know, as we've talked about it, since COVID has happened, figured out ways that we can do this all electronically. But what we wanted to do is get their input to the ordinance before presenting it to you in June.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Now, Bob?
Kathy, I'm a little bit confused by the terms. Is there a difference between registration and licensing?
Yes, the registration would just be, like, our business licenses are basically a registration. You fill out a form and you pay the fee, and then that allows the city to put it in its system and receive sales tax and all that kind of stuff. Locate them on a map so we know where they are, and then we can figure out how many are within 500 feet. But it doesn't require the business to provide their operating plan and their industrial hygienist that they need for the manufacturing process. All of that would be delayed and all the inspections by all the various city departments would be delayed until it was full licensing.
Okay, so on the hierarchy of things, registration is lower. It's merely just listing the fact that you're here and you're doing business. And then the outcome of this engagement process you want to have would be the criteria in the process for ultimately licensing. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And so I want to come back to Aaron's point. So you believe there are 55 hemp, or maybe more, but at least 55 hemp businesses in Boulder. Are those registered right now?
Yes, those are the, well, those are the ones that have city sales licenses that said they were a hemp business or the fire department has found on inspection.
Right, and obviously the word license is a little unfortunate here, but those are the ones that you're calling registered now? Those are the ones that you know about? Or is there yet another process?
Those are the ones we're calling.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
There would be another process to register them. It's just another, it's a two-page application, I believe. Michonne's already drafted it. Pretty simple application to find out a little bit more about the businesses than you get on a business license application.
Okay, and so your proposal, the staff's proposal is to, right now, like in the next month or so, find out how many of those there are out there and register them all, right?
Correct.
But then have the process for determining what the criteria are and the processes for licensing that's going to happen later. So the first step is now, second step is registration, and the third step next year is licensing. Is that right?
Correct.
So getting back to Aaron's point, is it possible that we could, I get your point about your concern about if there's a gap between registration now and licensing sometime next year, that there may be more businesses that come in and they might be able to take advantage of the grandfathering and they may be too close together, assuming that there's some sort of spacing requirement that ultimately is put in place. Could we say now, because I share Aaron's concern of a de facto moratorium, could we say now that those who are grandfathered with respect to distance are those that register now? And if someone comes in and starts a business between now and whenever this process finishes in 2021, they register also, but they can't take advantage of the license of the grandfathering for purposes of distance. If that's our primary purpose, we say, hey, listen, you can come in and do a business and we'll register you, but it's at your risk. And if you happen to be too close to another hemp business and we end up with a 500-foot rule, you may have to move. So you better be thoughtful about where you set up your business. That shifts the risk to them that protects us if that's your primary concern about the distancing, but allows us not to impose a kind of arbitrary moratorium on who's here now. Would that work?
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea. I think, you know, I didn't think of going that way because it's harder to close a business after it's open than not have it open, but I think that's a really good idea and you're shifting the risk is a good way to put it, in a way we can present it in the public outreach.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I don't see any hands up. Mary, yours is up still, but do you have anything else you need to... Mary, go ahead.
Yes, so just again about the outreach, I was just wondering, is this, is this what you're thinking right now that it would be staff and it would be through Be Heard Boulder? And is that what you're thinking in terms of how you would conduct the outreach?
Yes, and through the list that we have now and through the chamber.
Okay, so, and that's, that was going to be a suggestion is, or a question, I guess, is have you talked to the chamber about getting them on board with helping with the outreach given the challenges in staffing and the limitations in doing outreach right now?
Yes, we have been and they're helping us.
Great, thank you, Kathy.
Okay, I don't see anyone else, so I'm looking for if this is under a matters. So I think we're just looking for our feedback, correct? So there's no, there's no action to be taken here, Tom, is that right?
No motion. And this is exactly where we're hoping for counsel feedback on our plan. We've gotten some really good feedback.
Great. And I'll just try and summarize the feedback. I think the feedback that I heard was that we go ahead with registration, we try and get everyone registered who's practicing as a hemp business right now. Any hemp businesses which are not practicing but want to open up, we'll fill out the registration with the warning that they're not going to be grandfathered. The new businesses will not be grandfathered for the purposes of any regulation that comes in on hemp businesses. Does that sound about right, Aaron?
Yeah, thanks, Sam. Well, Bob, I appreciate your creative thinking, but I don't know that I will eventually be in favor of a distancing requirement for hemp businesses. I think they're different from marijuana businesses, and I don't think that it's probably necessary to have a distancing requirement. So I would say, I personally, I wouldn't include that part of it. I would just...
I guess, and I'll weigh in, I think it's just a warning as far as the registration goes, that council has not weighed in on rules yet. And if council weighs in on a rule that is around distancing or something else, you may not be grandfathered. So it's just a heads up to them, have a look. If we don't end up, if a future council does not end up with a rule, it will be, I think it's just a heads up courtesy.
Yeah, I guess if you phrase it as there is the possibility that there will be a future rule, rather than there will be a rule, then that seems reasonable.
Yeah, I would phrase it because we don't know yet, right? So, but I think Bob's creative thinking is to give businesses who come in after their grandfathering is, we don't know and businesses are unregulated, well, this is kind of a half-step to say, look, we're going to register you all because we expect there to be additional regulations because at some point hemp can become marijuana when it's concentrated. And that's one of the complexities of this form of cannabis. It could be just clothes that have no intoxicant property, or it could be concentrated to the point where there is an intoxicant property to it. So I guess, I think it's worth saying something so that they understand what they're moving into. The alternative is not to register, it's either a moratorium, which I don't think the council here is going to want to do, or it's not saying anything at all. But I think it's, I like Bob's idea. So if other council members want to weigh in, Bob's got his hand.
Thank you for that clarification, and I should have said that, yeah, I don't necessarily know what the rules are going to be, whether it be a distance rule or any other rule. So I wouldn't presume any rule, I think it's just as Sam said, that we should, and obviously the staff's going to have to pick a cutoff date, but anybody who registers beyond that cutoff date, we would simply say to them, hey, listen, you just need to understand that there eventually will be some rules. We don't know what those are, and we want to let you know that you may not be grandfathered. And maybe distance, it could be, could be any number of things. So yeah, no, thank you for that, Aaron. I don't mean to imply that we will necessarily have a distance rule.
Thanks.
And I think that the important part of the heads up is we don't know what the rules will be. You are coming in at a time you won't be grandfathered in necessarily, but you may be. You know, the council could also say, we want all those businesses grandfathered in and there's no rules and, you know. So I think it's just a word of warning that the council, when it takes this up, might apply something to you that it doesn't apply to others. And that's all it is, is just a heads up. I think that's only fair because we don't know what council will do. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands. This is all just advice to staff, so we're not making a motion so there's no final decision. Staff will... Tom and Kathy, will you come back to us when you have firmness up? What's your, what's your plan for the next steps?
Well, the ordinance is scheduled for June, so we'll do the outreach, we'll bring it back, and then council can have a more full debate on, discussion on what the rules should look like, at least at the first phase.
Got it. Great. So you'll bring us some options around what we've discussed and we'll figure it out in June.
Yes, we will.
Yes, and so for the point that we, what we're doing for this licensing is only for the cannabis plant. So whether it's marijuana or whether it's hemp, that it has the same effect on the neighboring properties for the odor and for the manufacturing process. We aren't trying to get into the THC content. We're just trying to regulate the part that affects neighborhoods. So if that helps allay anybody's concerns, that's what we're aiming for.
Got it, I see. Anyone else? Well, thanks for bringing this to us. Good luck on writing, and we'll see it in June.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Your next item tonight is about your financial strategy committee.
Great, and I'm going to call on Bob first before we jump into this. Bob, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, just by way of context for those who are not on council, this was a committee that was formed by, an ad hoc committee, I should say, was formed by council in December, and that committee started meeting in January, met several times between January and end of April. And that committee consists of Mary, Mary Young, Judy Joseph and myself. And we worked closely with the budget staff to put together recommendations, which council saw and received and I think accepted last week. And one of those recommendations, and our committee has now disbanded, we did our job. But one of the recommendations that the committee made was that there'd be a standing or permanent committee of council called the Financial Strategy Committee, which would make a number of recommendations to council, would work closely with the finance and budget staff, would look holistically about, at how the city collects its revenues and our balance of revenues, our mix of revenues, our dedication of taxes, and also how we go through a budgeting process and how we prioritize... and also how we go through a budgeting process and how we prioritize various services. And so that was, that was a very shorthand way of, of a much more lengthy set of recommendations, which Mary laid out for council last week. And then Sam called, because the committee had, the ad hoc committee had suggested the formation of a, of a permanent financial strategy committee. Sam called for volunteers to raise their hands to be appointed by council for this first term. I think what the committee had suggested is two council members for a two-year term and one council member for a one-year term. So it'd be a three-member committee. I, I think I might have been the first person to raise my hand and then subsequently, in no particular order, I think Mark self-nominated, Mary self-nominated, Junie self-nominated. I want to withdraw my nomination. I think four is probably too big for the committee. The, the ad hoc committee suggested three. I have tremendous confidence in Junie and Mary and Mark. And so unless anybody else wants to volunteer, I think my suggestion is that be the committee. It's a great group of people and I don't need to serve on it. And I know that they'll be coming back to the rest of council for consultation, recommendations, advice as we move forward here. And I look forward to participating in that way.
Okay, very good. So the way I'm going to interpret this is we had four people nominate themselves. Bob has withdrawn, so there's three remaining. And the recommendation from last week had been that we appoint two for two-year terms and one for a one-year term. I would ask the, the three who have nominated, if there's one of you that is interested in the one-year term. Or alternatively, if anyone wants to speak up and say they would prefer the two-year term. Okay, so don't hear anything there. Mary?
I'll take the one-year term. If nobody else, unless somebody else wants to hand wrestle me for it. But we can't do that right now.
I'm Bob.
Yeah, and I just want to maybe, because normally our appointments committees are done in either December or January. I think recently we've been doing them in December. I'd like to make a suggestion that these terms run until December of 2021, or at least the first one. And then the second, the two-year terms run to 2022. So it's really be a year and a bit and two and a bit. That way we can close out these terms a year from December. And then we can in sync with all of other committees. I'm just throwing that out there for whatever it's worth. So a year and a half term and two, two and a half year terms.
I agree with that.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Adam?
I was going to say, I agree with that as well. I just want to make everyone aware, I did think about throwing my hat in the ring for this, but I understand the necessity of continuity from the committee that was first appointed to carry on their work for a longer period of time. But I just wanted to make you all aware that I would be super interested in serving a one-year term next time around, because this is of major interest to me. But I think it's more important that the people who are involved are the ones who are going to go ahead with the work.
Okay, very good. I will just say that the, for the public as well, the function of this committee has become elevated given the COVID crisis and the impact on our budget. And one of the main duties that the committee members will have here is making the first pass through the budget and ranking the services that the city provides to the community as one of four rankings, which range from essential to amenity. And bringing that to council where council will consider the rankings. And one of the main things council will need to do with the recommendations made by the Financial Strategy Committee is vetting what they're recommending as far as the ranking, because we'll probably then use those rankings to look at how to deal with the fact that our budget will be probably 15%, maybe more down from what it was the previous year. So this is, is a very big responsibility the members of the committee are taking on. Because a lot of what they'll do is the deep dive work that is going to set council up to have some pretty difficult discussions. So I want to thank Mary and Junie and Mark for being willing to do it, also Bob for being willing to do it and pull your hat out of the ring. So it seems like we have three nominees for three slots. Mary has volunteered for the one-year term. So I guess I would call for, is there any objection to this or shall we do this by acclamation? So I'm seeing no objection. So I'm going to say that by acclamation, city council will appoint Mary Young to a one-year term on the Financial Strategy Committee and Junie Joseph and Mark Wallach to two-year terms on the Financial Strategy Committee. We'll accept Bob's suggestion that the terms run, the one-year term runs up until December of 2021. The two-year terms run until December of 2022. Everyone in agreement with that? Great. Okay, here are no objections. That is done by acclamation. We're kind of at the end of the meeting. I do, I got two updates while we were going through the meeting. Lewisville and Lafayette have both adopted facial covering orders in addition to the county order. So that in places of public accommodation in Lewisville and Lafayette, there will be a requirement for facial coverings. Unless Superior is going to rescind the order that their mayor put in place. Superior also has a facial covering requirement for places of public accommodation. So many of the cities in Boulder County have done this. I have not heard what Longmont has done.
Yeah, they just voted, they just voted in favor as well.
Okay, so that means that five cities in Boulder County have all done the same thing that we affirmed tonight. So that's good. So there will not be a motivation for people to go from one city to another based on facial covering rules. So I just thought I'd share that with everyone. Jane, anything else? Any other council members? Anything else?
No, I think we're done for tonight.
Okay, very good. I think we're done too. 9:57, so back on track. This council meeting is
He said Rachel had something.
I have my hand up, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's just a real quick, I didn't, I didn't pick up that I had a question during the consent agenda. So I'm going to ask if maybe CAC could just clarify something. It was on the 20th plenty. We had our discussion. We were told that there wouldn't be enforcement basically of the 20 miles an hour, but then in the ordinance, it reads that with a 20 mile an hour default speed limit where a photo radar van is deployed, motorists will receive a warning letter for 25 to 29 in compliance with the state enabling legislation. Motorists traveling 30 or over will receive a violation which includes a financial penalty. So I thought we weren't going to have photo radar vans where we had the 20s plenty and I'm confused by that. And we just hope that maybe we could get clarification and CAC could tee that up.
CAC can tee it up.
Sorry, it's late.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, great. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Night, everybody.
Night.